All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome, members of the public. We welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is January 21st, 2025. We take note that a full complement of the board is present. Chief Executive Officer, County Council, Executive Officer, and Sergeant-at-Arms are all here to assist. We will begin today's board meeting with the county's land acknowledgment. The county of Los Angeles recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and care for by the Tongba, Tatavium, Surrano, Kish, and Schumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgment demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, Fernandino Tatavium Band of Mission Indians, Gabriolino Tongba Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabriolino Tongba San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabriolino Band of Mission Indians Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. To learn more about the First Peoples of Los Angeles County, please visit the Los Angeles City/County Native American Indian Commission website The invocation will be led by Reverend Jeanette M. Rep, St. Peter's Episcopal Church from the 4th District, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Kevin Hammond, former Senior Airman, United States Air Force Reserves from the 5th District. If you are able, please stand.
Thank you. I'd like us to begin with a moment of silence, holding in our hearts and offering up to God all of those affected by the fires. Gracious and loving God, we know and follow you in different ways, and yet we also know that you are one, and thank you for the many ways you are present with us and guide and strengthen us. We give thanks this day for the county of Los Angeles, for our supervisors, their staff, and for their work on behalf of the people of the county of Los Angeles. As we gather today, open all our hearts and minds to your spirit of compassion, wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose, our leaders may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all who live here. This week of all weeks, we pray for all of those affected by last week's fires. We give thanks for the first responders and the many leaders and residents who have stepped up to help the displaced residents. We pray for ongoing care, grace, mercy, and compassion for the families of those who lost their lives, their homes, their businesses, as well as for the strength for those who lead during these difficult times and throughout the rebuilding process. And we pray, as we would at any time, that any barriers which divide us may crumble, secedions disappear, and hatred cease, that we may live in justice and peace. We pray in your name, the God who created us. Amen. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Please face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. If you're a veteran, you may render a hand salute and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor Hahn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to welcome the very Reverend Jeanette M. Rep, the rector of St. Peter's Episcopal Church in San Pedro. Originally from California, Reverend Rep attended seminary in the Chicago area and served at several urban and suburban parishes there for 25 years. She moved back to California and has now served at St. Peter's for more than 14 years and is dedicated to fostering a vibrant faith community. She is grateful to lead a congregation with a strong commitment to serving our larger community. St. Peter's partners with nonprofits to help provide for those in need, including the YMCA, Laundry Love, Family Promise, Harbor Interfaith Services, and Harbor Terrace Retirement Community. Reverend Rep is a founding member of the San Pedro Faith Consortium, which is focused on providing new and supplemental service to unhoused and low-income residents of San Pedro and being an inclusive and progressive faith-based voice. In addition to her humanitarian work, Reverend Rep wears many other hats. She holds a Master of Social Work degree and has worked in private practice as a licensed clinical social worker, providing psychotherapy and spiritual direction. She's a mother of teenage twin daughters, Ren and Lou, and she also has a fifth-degree black belt in Sado Karate and has 20 years' experience teaching martial arts and self-defense. Reverend Rep, thank you for leading us in the invocation this afternoon and for your dedication in helping others. It is my honor to present you with this certificate.
Please join me in thanking Senior Airman Kevin Hammond for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning. Senior Airman Hammond served in the United States Air Force Reserves from 2012 to 2018. During his service, he received the Combat Readiness Medal with One Oak Leaf Cluster, the National Defense Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Expedi... Expedi... How do you say that? Uh-huh, that's Expeditionary Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Air Force Expeditionary Service Ribbon with Gold Border, Air Force Expeditionary Service Ribbon, Basic Military Training Honor Graduate, Air Force Training Ribbon. And I just saw that he lives in Altadena with his wife and child. Senior Airman Hammond currently works as a housing case manager at the Los Angeles County Department of Military and Veterans Affairs Veteran Peer Access Network. He is known to be an incredible husband and father, always deeply involved in family life and creating meaningful moments with those that he loves. Senior Airman Hammond, thank you for your service to our nation and for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, especially knowing that you've got a lot going on in your hometown. I know I can speak for the entire board and really for the county. Our hearts are with you and your family and the community of Altadena. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to welcome the very Reverend Jeanette M. Rep, the rector of St. Peter's Episcopal Church in San Pedro. Originally from California, Reverend Rep attended seminary in the Chicago area and served at several urban and suburban parishes there for 25 years. She moved back to California and has now served at St. Peter's for more than 14 years and is dedicated to fostering a vibrant faith community. She is grateful to lead a congregation with a strong commitment to serving our larger community. St. Peter's partners with nonprofits to help provide for those in need, including the YMCA, Laundry Love, Family Promise, Harbor Interfaith Services, and Harbor Terrace Retirement Community. Reverend Rep is a founding member of the San Pedro Faith Consortium, which is focused on providing new and supplemental service to unhoused and low-income residents of San Pedro and being an inclusive and progressive faith-based voice. In addition to her humanitarian work, Reverend Rep wears many other hats. She holds a Master of Social Work degree and has worked in private practice as a licensed clinical social worker, providing psychotherapy and spiritual direction. She's a mother of teenage twin daughters, Ren and Lou, and she also has a fifth-degree black belt in Sado Karate and has 20 years' experience teaching martial arts and self-defense. Reverend Rep, thank you for leading us in the invocation this afternoon and for your dedication in helping others. It is my honor to present you with this certificate. Please join me in thanking Senior Airman Kevin Hammond for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning. Senior Airman Hammond served in the United States Air Force Reserves from 2012 to 2018. During his service, he received the Combat Readiness Medal with One Oak Leaf Cluster, the National Defense Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Expedi... Expedi... How do you say that? Uh-huh, that's Expeditionary Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Air Force Expeditionary Service Ribbon with Gold Border, Air Force Expeditionary Service Ribbon, Basic Military Training Honor Graduate, Air Force Training Ribbon. And I just saw that he lives in Altadena with his wife and child. Senior Airman Hammond currently works as a housing case manager at the Los Angeles County Department of Military and Veterans Affairs Veteran Peer Access Network. He is known to be an incredible husband and father, always deeply involved in family life and creating meaningful moments with those that he loves. Senior Airman Hammond, thank you for your service to our nation and for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, especially knowing that you've got a lot going on in your hometown. I know I can speak for the entire board and really for the county. Our hearts are with you and your family and the community of Altadena. So, thank you.
Thank you. We've been going to donation centers and everything, and the same thing I was saying. I was...
All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome, members of the public. We welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is January 21st, 2025. We take note that a full complement of the board is present. Chief Executive Officer, County Council, Executive Officer, and the Sergeant at Arms are all here to assist. We will begin today's board meeting with the county's land acknowledgement.
The County of Los Angeles recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and care for by the Tongba, Tatavium, Serrano, Kish, and Schumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, Fernandino Tatavium Band of Mission Indians, Gabriolino Tongba Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabriolino Tongba San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabriolino Band of Mission Indians Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. To learn more about the First Peoples of Los Angeles County, please visit the Los Angeles City/County Native American Indian Commission website at lanaic.lacounty.gov.
The invocation will be led by Reverend Jeanette M. Rep., St. Peter's Episcopal Church from the 4th District, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Kevin Hammond, former Senior Airman, United States Air Force Reserves from the 5th District. If you are able, please stand.
I'd like us to begin with a moment of silence, holding in our hearts and offering up to God all of those affected by the fires. Gracious and loving God, we know and follow you in different ways, and yet we also know that you are one, and thank you for the many ways you are present with us and guide and strengthen us. We give thanks this day for the County of Los Angeles, for our supervisors, their staff, and for their work on behalf of the people of the County of Los Angeles. As we gather today, open all our hearts and minds to your spirit of compassion, wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose, our leaders may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all who live here. This week of all weeks, we pray for all of those affected by last week's fires. We give thanks for the first responders and the many leaders and residents who have stepped up to help the displaced residents. We pray for ongoing care, grace, mercy, and compassion for the families of those who lost their lives, their homes, their businesses, as well as for the strength for those who lead during these difficult times and throughout the rebuilding process. And we pray, as we would at any time, that any barriers which divide us may crumble, secedions disappear, and hatred cease, that we may live in justice and peace. We pray in your name, the God who created us. Amen.
Good afternoon. Please face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. If you're a veteran, you may render a hand salute and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor Han?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to welcome the very Reverend Jeanette M. Rep., the rector of St. Peter's Episcopal Church in San Pedro. Originally from California, Reverend Rep. attended seminary in the Chicago area and served at several urban and suburban parishes there for 25 years. She moved back to California and has now served at St. Peter's for more than 14 years and is dedicated to fostering a vibrant faith community. She is grateful to lead a congregation with a strong commitment to serving our larger community. St. Peter's partners with nonprofits to help provide for those in need, including the YMCA, Laundry Love, Family Promise, Harbor Interfaith Services, and Harbor Terrace Retirement Community. Reverend Rep. is a founding member of the San Pedro Faith Consortium, which is focused on providing new and supplemental service to unhoused and low-income residents of San Pedro and being an inclusive and progressive faith-based voice. In addition to her humanitarian work, Reverend Rep. wears many other hats. She holds a Master of Social Work degree and has worked in private practice as a licensed clinical social worker, providing psychotherapy and spiritual direction. She's a mother of teenage twin daughters, Ren and Lou, and she also has a fifth-degree black belt in Sado Karate and has 20 years' experience teaching martial arts and self-defense. Reverend Rep., thank you for leading us in the invocation this afternoon and for your dedication in helping others. It is my honor to present you with this certificate.
Please join me in thanking Senior Airman Kevin Hammond for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning. Senior Airman Hammond served in the United States Air Force Reserves from 2012 to 2018. During his service, he received the Combat Readiness Medal with One Oak Leaf Cluster, the National Defense Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Expedi- how do you say that? Uh huh, that's Expeditionary Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Air Force Expeditionary Service Ribbon with Gold Border, Air Force Expeditionary Service Ribbon, Basic Military Training Honor Graduate, Air Force Training Ribbon. And I just saw that he lives in Altadena with his wife and child. Senior Airman Hammond currently works as a Housing Case Manager at the Los Angeles County Department of Military and Veterans Affairs Veteran Peer Access Network. He is known to be an incredible husband and father, always deeply involved in family life and creating meaningful moments with those that he loves. Senior Airman Hammond, thank you for your service to our nation and for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, especially knowing that you've got a lot going on in your hometown. I know I can speak for the entire board and really for the county. Our hearts are with you and your family and the community of Altadena. So, thank you. With that, we will now move on to today's agenda. Executive Officer, please call the agenda.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Today's agenda will begin on Page 2, Consent Calendar, Board of Supervisors, Items 1 through 4. On Page 4, Administrative Matters, Items 5 through 23. On Item 6, Supervisor Horvath requests that this item be held. On Item 9, Supervisor Han requests that this item be held. On Item 18, the Chief Probation Officer requests that this item be continued to February 18th, 2025, as indicated on the posted agenda. On Item 19, Supervisor Barker requests that this item be continued to April 15th, 2025. On Page 15, this includes miscellaneous additions to the agenda, which were posted more than 72 hours in advance of the meeting, as indicated on a supplemental agenda. On Item 21B, Supervisor Horvath requests that this item be held. On Item 21C, Supervisor Han revised her motion to add Supervisor Barker as a co-author. On Page 16, Ordinance for Introduction, Item 24. On Page 17, Public Hearings, Items 25 through 26. On Items 25 and 26, the Director of Regional Planning requests that these items continue one week to January 28th, 2025, as indicated on a supplemental agenda. On Page 21, Special District Agenda, this is the agenda for the Regional Park and Open Space, District of the County of Los Angeles, 1P. The requests for continuances through Item 1P are before you. That completes the reading of the agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Move by Supervisor Mitchell, seconded by Supervisor Horvath to approve these items. That will be the order. Executive Officer, please read the Code of Conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is about to commence. A Code of Conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's board hearing, and the board encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the board must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the board's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the board. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with board members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements toward the board, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and board members, and may not clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the board meeting. And finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify the Sergeant at Arms or other county staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Today, we will begin with public comment on items not held by the board, then Items 21B, 6, 9, and finishing with general public comment. Before we begin, Executive Officer, please read the call-in information that was also provided on the agenda and explain the speaking roles.
For members of the public wishing to participate remotely, as indicated on the agenda, please call 877-226-8163 and use participant code number 1336503. Members of the public participating remotely and in the boardroom, you will have the opportunity to address the board throughout the meeting. You will receive one minute for one item and up to two minutes for two or more items not held by the board. You will receive one minute to address the board on items held by supervisors and one minute to address the board on general public comment, for a total of six minutes for this meeting. Please state your name and clearly indicate the agenda item numbers you will be addressing. Please note, once your time has expired, we will immediately move to the next speaker. Please monitor your time and the items you are signing up for, as your name will not be called once your time has elapsed. For members of the public joining us remotely, when the board moves to the item you wish to address, promptly press 1, then 0, to be moved from the listening queue to the speaking queue. Remember to turn down the volume on your device as soon as the moderator calls on you, or there will be an echo. You will need to press 1, then 0, for each item you would like to speak on. To ensure we hear from both in-person and telephonic speakers, we will alternate between the two speaking queues. Members of the public who are in attendance, when you hear or see your name displayed on the screen, please come down to the front of the boardroom, and staff will assist you. Please do not approach the podium until directed to do so.
We will now hear from members of the public wishing to address the board on all items that have not been held by the supervisors. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1, then 0, to comment on these items. You must indicate the agenda item numbers that you wish to address in order for us to allocate the appropriate amount of time. Executive Officer, please call all members of the public who have signed up to speak on these items.
Will the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you. Joy Gold, Andrew Salimian, Dave Soram, and Ray Baca. As a final reminder for participants...
Excuse me.
You're being, excuse me.
Excuse me.
You're being disruptive. Can you please maintain order so that we can continue with the meeting? This is your first warning.
We're gonna clear the board. Would you...
Please maintain order and wait for public comment. This is your second warning. You are disrupting the meeting.
All right, I'm asking you to... I'm giving you your first warning. We're gonna clear the boardroom. If you do not, I'm asking you, please sit down. That is your first warning. All right. Sergeant at Arms, I'd like you to clear the boardroom.
This is your third warning. We need you to be quiet.
We're gonna go into recess for five minutes while our Sergeant at Arms clears out the boardroom.
Colleagues and those listening, pursuant to Government Code 54957.9, because a meeting was willfully disrupted and interrupted by groups of persons rendering the orderly conduct of the meeting unfeasible, and because order could not be restored by removal of individuals who were willfully interrupting the meeting, the meeting room was cleared. Representatives of the press, except for those participating in the disturbance, and individuals not involved in the disruption, will be allowed to remain in the boardroom. Everyone that was removed from the hearing room was given instructions on how to participate in the meeting virtually. Everyone is welcome to call in based on our instructions to speak to the board on a particular item for the rest of the meeting. So now, we are beginning with public comment. You may call the public, we can be in.
As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address all non-held items, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first person is Colin Campbell. Your line is open. If you are muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin. One moment, please. One moment.
Go ahead.
One moment. You may begin.
Honorable L.A. Board of Supervisors, Item 21B, may we use the 238.5 billion federal budget for artificial and general intelligence to assist with the fires as Donald
We're not, we're not on 21B yet. 21B will be coming up after-
I'll pause. I'll get back my time, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, next speaker.
Roy Humphries. Your line is open, you may begin.
To Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Barker, for bringing respect to the people on the brown act. Item number nine, armed guards at the county libraries, that is an eye-opener, we have to have armed guards. On the graffiti removal, the graffiti contractors must have quality. Out here in Roland Heights, it's hard to determine whether the graffiti is worse than the cleanup, as far as the quality of their presentation there. And on the watershed, item 16, hopefully we've learned just eons of information from our latest fire experience in the part on the war. On A10, the discussion about the actions towards infectious disease, I've been commenting to you for how many months a year that you can't even deal with gonorrhea and syphilis, this is ridiculous. If you're not willing to put the effort in to take care of it, and it's a comment on our society-
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in queue to address the board.
Thank you, we will now go to in-person speakers, please begin.
Golda, and I'm here to speak on item number 10. I am your concessionaire at Whittier Narrows Equestrian Center. I learned about this proposed action on Friday evening. I did send an email to you all, I have a letter, I brought a copy with me if you did not receive it. Plus, it was a holiday weekend, so more than likely, you don't know why I'm here. Essentially, I'm here to ask for you to delay this action, as it was a surprise, number one. And the county and I have not had any discussion regarding the funds that I owe the county. I acknowledge that, and I am more than ready to work with the county, if you will allow me to have that time, to meet with them, set up a payment plan. My contract is two more years. I'm very close to retirement. No one has complained about my work in this center.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Dave Sorm, I'm here to speak on 21B.
Hold on one second, David. Can we have someone from my staff go and get the information and talk to her, please? Yeah, it's on, it's item number 10, Parks and Rec item. Go ahead, David.
Good afternoon, Board, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Dave Sorm, I'm representing United Contractors of California. I'm speaking on behalf of 21B in favor. Last Thursday, on the 16th of this month-
This is on public comment, 21B is going to come up after this? So this is, this is public comment that you're speaking on? So if you can hold off for another five minutes?
We can hold off. Yep, we can.
You got it.
I'm also.
These are items that have not been held, so go ahead.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, I'm speaking on items 25 and 26, I don't believe they've been held. Speaking on behalf of the Los Angeles Conservancy, we've taken a pretty good look at the West Side area plan, and I don't know if I'll be able to be here next week, so I want to take my time today while it's nice and quiet and there's only five of us here. I really do want to commend the staff for working with us, hearing some of our concerns, meeting with the neighborhood, I think the neighborhood still has a lot of concerns. Supervisor Mitchell, I'm sure you've heard all of them. Our focus right now, as the L.A. Conservancy, the countywide nonprofit dedicated to historic preservation, is that we get a survey of Ladera Heights. Currently, we have on our website documenting the losses of the wildfires in the Pacific Palisades, in Malibu, and in Altadena. And one thing we're finding in Altadena is the lack of a survey makes it extremely difficult. We've lost a lot of collective heritage, intangible heritage, and some of those things are gone forever. And I understand they won't be rebuilt, but we should have a record of what that is. Even on our site walk in Ladera Heights, we were walking and some neighbors said, "Oh, do you know Red Fox used to own this building?" And we wouldn't have known that, you know, in a million years if the neighbors did not speak to us. So that's the one ask we're going to have. I sent a letter with more information, so I hope you take that into consideration. And just thank you for your dedication to preservation.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, I'm Daphne Bradford. And just listening to Andrew, we did do an incredible walk through Ladera Heights regarding the West Side area plan, and we were asking for a postponement. Supervisor Mitchell, thank you for willing to work with us on that. We're just hoping that Assembly Member Isaac Bryan is able to grant the extension, because now, after the wildfires, we have the same concerns to try to document a lot of the history there and just take a step back and reevaluate and give us a fairer opportunity to participate. We're not against it, we just want to make sure that it's fair for the area and that we can work more collaboratively together. There was a small, five-acre fire during the wildfires, and we're very concerned about that and happy that it didn't get out of control. So we really just want to postpone it, just as Supervisor Barker, you had a problem with the batteries, because I saw your group come down, and you kind of stopped that. And just to take another look at it, that's what we're asking as well. We're not opposed, we just wanted to be a-
Thank you, next speaker.
All right. Are there no other speakers on the phone?
There are no other speakers on the phone.
That concludes our time for public comment on these items. Executive Officer, please indicate the agenda item numbers on which we will be voting.
The following items are before you, 1 through 5, 7 and 8, 10 through 17, 20, 21A, 21C as revised, 24, 1P. These items are before you.
Moved by Supervisor Mitchell, seconded by Supervisor Hahn to approve these items, with the exceptions noted by the executive officer. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries, 5 to 0.
Thank you. We will begin with item 21B, seeking state and federal assistance for the Los Angeles County wildfires, which was held by Supervisor Horvath. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 to comment on this item. Supervisor Horvath?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for joining me in this motion and for your continued strong leadership in the wake of these terrible disasters that we are facing in our districts. The devastation experienced because of this month's wildfires is unprecedented, and I know we've used that word in different contexts, but I have to say, this, there is no better example of that word in Los Angeles County than what we are experiencing right now with these wildfires. The destruction is unbelievable, it has left communities completely leveled and not functional, potentially for a substantial period of time. As our firefighters continue their heroic efforts to complete containment of Palisades and Eaton fires, the hard and lengthy work of restoring our communities must begin. The costs that will be incurred to clear debris and make our land developable, once again, are astronomical. We must be strategic and relentless in pursuing state and federal funding and support to quickly restore the communities that burned. As we have seen in the past, the devastation caused by wildfires takes years to clean up and rebuild entirely. To move forward expeditiously, we need the full weight of state and federal partners to make resources and support available to reach normalcy sooner than later. Los Angeles County will be successful in pulling every resource available, only if we demonstrate unity in our request to state and federal governments. Once again, I want to thank our firefighters, our law enforcement officials, and all of our first responders, as well as our Office of Emergency Management, who have been working tirelessly to protect our communities. There are many people to thank, and today I want to acknowledge the urban search and rescue teams on the ground at the Palisades and Eaton fires. Lieutenant Christopher Landavazo, Sheriff's Department, Battalion Chief Greg Short, L.A. County Fire, Sergeant Ryan Flores, L.A. County Sheriff's Department, Battalion Chief Trey Espy, L.A. County Fire, Battalion Chief Chris Allende, L.A. County Fire, Captain Danny Nauschua, Pasadena Fire, Battalion Chief Graham Grohman, Marin County Fire, Sergeant Chris Lee, L.A. County Sheriff's Department, Deputy Francis Bowie, L.A. County Sheriff's Department, Deputy Pete Bomarito, L.A. County Sheriff's Department, and Deputy Orlando Martinez, L.A. County Sheriff's Department. Today, as we make the request for our county legislative advocates to pursue all assistance available from Sacramento and Washington, D.C., it is imperative that we hear from our fire chief, our Office of Emergency Management, Public Works, and Public Health on where we are, what the immediate tasks ahead of us are, and what state and federal resources will be required to not only move forward expeditiously, but in the comprehensive manner that we intend. I want to thank all of my colleagues for their support and collaboration, and I know that in addition to the actions taken as part of today's motion, we, along with all of our staffs who have been working tirelessly to address this critical situation, including exhausting all of our resources and contacts to provide assistance to help our communities, will continue to work together. We will ensure these impacted communities can begin to heal and rebuild, and that we'll come out a stronger Los Angeles County. So if I may start with just a few questions to give us an update on where we are. Chief Maroni, can you please share with us the status of both fires and the damage your team has identified to date?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. So currently, we're still in the response mode, we're working towards full containment of both the Palisades and the Eaton incidents. After containment, full containment is reached, we'll work on 100% control. But after the emergencies are abated, we'll transition into recovery operations to partner with our other county family agencies, especially the permitting agencies, to make sure that we fully support all of the residents and communities with the most expeditious rebuild possible, to the highest of standards, to prevent another community conflagration from occurring again. We have been working with LASD to search each and every home that has been destroyed, to make sure that the home is safe and that there's no fatalities that we have yet to identify. That's primarily the function of the sheriff, but it is with the support of L.A. County Fire. And currently, we are engaged in community support activities out of our neighborhood fire stations, making sure that the people who have returned to the area are supported by fire.
I know that in our conversations with the community, as well as with our state partners, there's been a lot of talk about how we are moving expeditiously, and I think it's also important to be mindful that it could take some time for people. And I think managing expectations will be important. And what people deserve to know is that we will push on all cylinders and on our side to help and make sure that we're getting back to some sense of normalcy as quickly as possible. And that includes redevelopment to home hardening and fire hardening standards for our homes as well, that we don't, to the extent possible, just want to see people go back to where they were. We want to help them with hardening practices, recognizing 21st century technology that exists now. And so I know that that, that all of your teams are pursuing that. Given the unprecedented nature of the devastation that we've experienced, this question I think will be for Director McGowan. Do you believe that the funding usually made available to our local communities after natural disasters, given the magnitude of this one, will be enough to restore those affected communities? Or how are you looking at that based on our experience from previous disasters like COVID and Wolsey and other experiences?
Thank you, Supervisors, and good afternoon. So our normal process in requesting federal and state assistance is through the initial action of the proclamation. Fortunately, with our request when we proclaimed a local emergency, we were provided with a state of emergency and then subsequently a major disaster declaration. And with that presidential major disaster declaration, many of the categories for federal assistance, everything from debris removal to reimbursements in emergency response costs on the public side, and then in supporting our community members, the approval of individual assistance was made. This is what I would consider the normal or routine process for getting support from our state and federal governments. What we've seen traditionally across the United States is when dealing with catastrophic emergencies and disasters, there's usually also supplemental programs. We experienced this firsthand in L.A. County with the COVID emergency. So with COVID, there were also additional federal assistance programs that were provided, and our initial assessments related to this disaster would be that the scale, the complexity, the areas that were impacted, to the magnitude they were, it would be beneficial if L.A. County was able to receive these additional assistance programs that we've all been working towards identifying.
I think that's why we wanted to make sure we are all on record in making these requests, so we're leveraging every available resource. I know we both routinely get asked about costs for cleanup and what that process is for the devastation that is existing in Altadena, Malibu, Topanga, Pacific Palisades, all our unincorporated communities that are impacted. So would local resources, even when combined with county and city of L.A., be sufficient to complete the cleanup in a timely manner? Or are we also pursuing, from a Public Works perspective, additional resources to help us move forward expeditiously in cleanup?
Hello, Supervisor. My name is Angela George Moody, I'm the Chief Deputy for Public Works with regards to resources and putting out efforts. So I think first I should say that Public Works is working in collaboration across the region with different agencies. In a traditional season with, without the unprecedented fires, we have a system that's prepared for flood control or for floods and rain events. In this case, as we work across the region, we're looking for consistency and actually the use of the current flood control system, along with the addition of additional BMPs throughout the system. We've gone back and we're removing sediment from our current, our existing debris basins, we're working with Cal OES on protection at the property level, property line level. And you should see a lot of efforts throughout the region, especially since cities are cooperating with the County of Los Angeles.
So I know a lot of that effort is happening through the leadership of the Flood Control District, which happens also through Public Works. This is a regional coordinated cleanup effort, and then there will be individual cleanup efforts that happen property by property.
Yes.
I understand that that's happening in two phases, that the Environmental Protection Agency is taking the lead on Phase 1, they've invested $100 million in that, as well as 500 personnel to start with that phase. And then in Phase 2, residents have the option of accessing that governmental cleanup support, and they have to fill out an application to get it, or they can work with private contractors, but those private contractors still have to adhere to the guidelines that are set forth by the EPA and all of our, all of our partners. And so I want to make sure that for the role that we play in the Flood Control District and at the county, that we're accessing all of the resources that we will need in this cleanup phase.
Yes.
Okay. Director McGowan, I see, you wanted to-
And I think we just want to emphasize, too, that more resources is going to make this recovery more effective, and the county and the partnering cities, because we have four cities that were heavily affected, too, do not have that scale of resources. So we are continuing with full throttle on the gas pedal to maximize every resource we can get from the state and federal government.
Great. And I know there's been a lot of concern with regard to public health impacts, so Dr. Ferrer, perhaps you could give us the latest on where, what we should be focusing on as it relates to public health, the public health emergency. on as it relates to the public health emergency before us.
Yeah, thank you so much. And before I answer, I just want to really thank Supervisor Horvath, Supervisor Barger, the entire board. You know, the leadership has been tremendous. It's heartbreaking, but I'm so proud to serve for you because you've really, I think, have made a huge difference in people's lives, and we want to be part of that effort. I think our big focus right now is on making sure that as people return to areas that either suffered a lot of burn or areas that were evacuated, and when they go back, there's going to be a lot of fire debris that blew in, soot in particular, as well as ash, that people are well, that people have protections that they can take to mitigate the dangers that are inherent in burn debris. I mean, fire debris is always dangerous, and we had massive amount of destruction. There's nothing safe. I can't stress this enough. There's no safe fire debris. It's filled with lead. It can be filled with asbestos. There can be heavy metals. And when you think about what's inside everybody's homes, there just are a lot of objects that when they burn can be toxic. So it's really important that people follow our guidance. And for that, we've tried to be at every single checkpoint. We're at the disaster recovery centers. We have a lot of information. We change that information, update it every day based on the questions we get. But we also are providing people with some basic personal protection equipment. So for those people that are going back to houses and they just need to do a cleanup, we have instructions for you. And we're really stressing that while you're cleaning, you should be wearing gloves and you should be wearing those N95 masks, those flimsy masks. Well, I'm not going to call them flimsy, but those surgical masks that people were wearing during COVID that really provided some protection actually provide no protection from the dangers of ash. So it's really important people use those respirators. They fit well, and they're able to actually mitigate against the dangerous toxins getting into the air that you're breathing. So really important. And we've got millions of masks that we're distributing. For people who are going back into burn areas because they want to sift through some of the fire debris and see what they can salvage, for those people, it is toxic, and it's really important to be completely covered up. We have kits, or if we don't have kits, we have Tyvek suits, we have goggles, we have masks, again, the respirator mask. And we have instructions on how to do this with as much protection as possible. I want to thank all of the county partners. You know, the reentry sites change. We try to always be there with our teams. I also want to note that we're also trying to take care of many of the workers who may be at other people's homes, who may not be in evacuation zones, but there's cleanup going on. So we've distributed over 37,000 personal protection equipment to workers. This is, a lot of these are landscapers, gardeners, domestic workers, so that they, too, you know, they're being asked to go in, clean up, clean up the yards. I want to remind everybody, especially with these winds right now, you cannot use leaf blower still anywhere in the county because you're just lifting up the ash. But we are also distributing personal protection equipment to those folks who we know are going ahead and dealing with, you know, debris that's actually contaminated. We also have been distributing air purifiers to schools. So we shipped out over 2,000 to Laco. That Laco has been distributing to school districts, particularly in the areas where there were a lot of debris and a lot of smoke and soot. And we're doing that at nursing homes and at shelters and at daycare centers. So again, trying to get to places where we know people are vulnerable. And, you know, again, I want to particularly thank our first responders for everything they've been doing and the level of leadership. So, thank you.
I want to thank your public health staff as well for being out there and distributing that PPE. It is critical. And I know there are people who are eager to get back just to see their home site and document certain things. But I have been saying, you know, if you can wait, please do, because it is not safe. We have a lot of cleanup to do, and especially if you have young children or if older adults are part of your household, they are particularly vulnerable. So we want to protect people and thank you for what your department is doing. So clearly, this is a multidisciplinary effort, and there will be lots of requests coming from different departments. Those requests need to be coordinated, so we're all on the same page. So, Madam CEO, I know that you are in charge of our layer team, and you're also helping to coordinate, you know, our requests. So what information do you need from our county departments, and how can we help support this coordinated legislative strategy? So all of our state and federal funding opportunities and all of our partners know that we are speaking with one voice in this massive cleanup effort.
Yes, thank you, Supervisors. So my layer team has already undertaken this work. We have already been in discussions with board offices, as well as our departments, particularly the health departments and the first responder departments, to identify with specificity additional resources that we may need or where we may need flexibility in existing statutes or regulations. So I think we have a good handle on what the needs are. In terms of speaking with one voice, I have been asked to come and present to the L.A. County delegation on what those needs are, and so I will be addressing them later this week. And in exchange, we have also asked them if they could communicate with us with one voice as well, so that we are all on the same page and not working at cross purposes.
I really appreciate that. Thank you all for the work that you're doing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I echo Supervisor Horvath's comments, and thanks to the incredible entire team that's gone out on both the Palisades and the Eaton fire. And I also want to thank my colleagues for the support. I know that Supervisor Horvath and I, each day, with the winds being projected the way they were, were very focused on protecting life first, but recognizing the destruction this has had on people's property. And I know that Cal Fire has said that this is going to be the most destructive blaze in California history. And I know, just going out there, I can attest to the fact that in Altadena, I've never seen anything like it. It is a community that has been torn apart, and it breaks my heart. And I know that many in the county family have been impacted. And so my first question is for you, Fizian, that is, for those that have been impacted, are we giving them grace to go out and find housing and go through the FEMA protocol? Are they using sick time? How are we navigating for employees that have been impacted by this?
Thank you, Supervisor. So a couple of things. One of the things that we have already stood up is, we had employees, county employees who have offered to share space in their own homes with other county employees that have been impacted, that, I forgot what we're calling it, like Home Share, Home Exchange. That app is already on the mylacounty.org website. And then we have been working over the last week or so with DHR on the time off. I believe that that memo is ready to go and will be issued today as soon as I get upstairs. Yes.
No, I just think it's important to recognize. I mean, I know, I was just up at JPL, and they've over, I think they said over 100 of their employees lost their homes. I mean, the impact that this is going to have across the county.
Yes.
At the convention center, I was telling Supervisor Solis, we have DCS social workers who have lost everything.
So we have a number of things that we have been working on with DHR. The first thing is the time off. The second issue is, we're trying to see if there is an appropriate workaround on the restriction of nonrepresented employees donating time to restricted employees. So that's a work in progress. We have also been working on planning a GoFundMe page for individual employees who may want their profile and their needs publicly posted on our Intranet site. So it will be on our internal county website, as well as a global GoFundMe page, because we understand that not all folks who have been impacted want to share that information. So those are things that DHR is leading. We are supporting DHR, and then county council is helping us navigate any legal restrictions that may apply. But those are the types of things that we intend to include on a page on our Intranet site for county employees.
Thank you. And now, you know, I look over here, that, Dr. Ferrer, your staff was at each checkpoint yesterday handing out PPEs and mental health. We had mental health workers walking the streets as individuals were allowed, individuals were allowed back in, having not seen their property. The mental health workers were there to support people as they saw for the first time what was left of their home. So I want to publicly thank our mental health workers as well, because I talked to them for a while. And, you know, it's interesting, because the impact this has had across the board, even on the people that are working on the front line, has been tremendous. And I know, you know that, Chief Maroni, I was out at Station 11 yesterday, and I asked him how they were doing, and the first thing the comment was, well, we're taking in, we're taking in donations, we're making sure the community is taken care of. And I said, no, how are you doing? Because they were there the first night, and the whole tone changed. And I know that I talked to Captain Williams with the sheriff, same thing. They have not had a chance to take a breath, to really, to really process what they've seen. So I just want, for your men and women in the fire department, for them to understand that we are there for them, and I want you to take care of them as well. Having said that, you know, I look to all of us as a county family with a sense of, we don't have months, we don't have months or years to get our act together. And one of the things that I hear from my Altadena community is, it took me almost two years to get a permit to build an ADU, is that's what's going to happen again. I don't have two years. You've got elderly people that are 78 that are saying, I don't know if I've got it in me to do this again. And I know that Director Pastrulla has said that we're going to stand up a site in Altadena. And when I look at Paradise and how Paradise took a planning process and brought it down to two weeks, if Paradise can do it, I know L.A. County can do it. We need to provide every tool we have to help people rebuild, and that includes embracing the governor's executive order, where he's allowing us to have tiny homes and/or trailers placed on property once it's deemed safe, so that people actually can be present in the community while the rebuilding takes place. And I want us to make sure we roll out that information in real time, because these are the questions that are being asked. This is a resilient community that even before the fires were put out, people were saying, what do I need to do to rebuild? We need to keep that momentum going, recognizing that safety first. And I know that the talks are about testing the soil because of the contaminants, but also testing the air to make sure that it's safe for people to not only go back to their homes, but also live in the community. And I think with time, that is going to be fine, but in the immediate, when they're going back up, I want to make sure it's in line. The one question I have for you, Chief Maroni, is, we know that there's a possibility of rain coming. And I know Public Works has been incredible about making sure that our Hahamungas cleaned out. Were prepared?
We're going to be prepared. Yes, absolutely. So we're going to be in partnership with OEM, DPW, L.A. County Sheriffs. We've had mud and debris flows before. We know how to prepare. We have the specific resources we need, bulldozers, USAR teams, and we're all going to be joined together, the four agencies, to make sure that prior to the rainfalling and its prediction, that residents get the information they need, and we could certainly be under evacuation orders and warnings again for the foothold communities that are below the burned areas.
Does that include this weekend where it's projected to have one inch?
That's correct. From what I've been told thus far, the weekend rain prediction is less than one inch, which would be beneficial. But if we were to get a heavy downpour, we could have mud and debris flow warnings. But we do work with DPW and their hydrologists and their soil engineers to come up with different phases. But we've been prepared in the past and will be prepared again.
So knowing that, if it's, let's say, an inch, that contaminated soil is going into our drainage system, what, I mean, what, if any, impact does that have as it goes downstream?
So within both watershed, Supervisor, we are implementing BMPs around all of the flood control district infrastructure, catch basins. I mentioned before that Cal OES was out actually trying to make sure that the debris, in partnership with us, stays on the individual parcels or properties. And then within the flood control district, we have debris basins. Those debris basins are designed to capture sediment, as well as, in this case, it'll be fire debris, to make sure that we protect homes or structures and also water bodies.
So, and I know the sheriff's not here, but, Chief Maroni, then what are we doing to disseminate that information to the public, knowing that there's a possibility this weekend that there may be at least an advisory to stay away? How are we getting that word out, or to Kevin, one or the other? I mean, you call it, he implements it. So what do you think?
Yeah, well, what I've been told for the prediction for the rain is that it's not going to be enough to create mud and debris flows. What we're hoping for is numerous instances of light rain for L.A. County and not a torrential downpour. The minute we get a torrential downpour, that's when we're going to be in trouble. But we also message on our social media for evacuations and what to do prior to the rainstorm. But we really do partner with DPW. They also message, as well as OEM and the sheriffs. And we look to EOB, the Emergency Operations Bureau, with the sheriffs, who coordinates evacuations, to make sure that we get the message out early, and we are posting it to our website.
Kevin?
Thank you, Supervisor. In addition to everything Chief Maroni and Angela said, the Watershed Task Force, which is one of the task forces that's been a part of this recovery structure, develops the phase forecast, and that's disseminated. So I encourage everyone, Angela, you probably have the site where people can go, but they should register. That will give them direct personal notifications based on their location. I also encourage everyone that lives anywhere remotely close to the burn scars to be mindful and pay attention to the National Weather Service updates, because they will be putting out also specific information related to rainfall rates and how those are going to impact. At the strategic level, I think it's crucial for all of us to realize, we have never experienced the scale of debris flow threat and burn scars that we are going into this winter season with. We have the Bridge Fire, with the scar footprint at the base of Mount Baldy and Wrightwood. We have the Post Fire that has burn scars that have capability of producing debris flow threat, along with these recent fires. And so it's going to take a full effort by every partner, including our local jurisdictions, our cities that are sitting at the bottom of the burn scars, to really continually inform throughout this entire rain season the real threat that we all face when we have these intense rainfalls.
Well, and I appreciate, and that's why I'm glad we're talking about it now. I think better to start talking about it now and getting it on people's radar, and keep driving home the point. And I know that Supervisor Horvath and I are going to be having a briefing tomorrow regarding debris removal, but we will touch base on this, because I think it's important for us to keep pounding home the fact that we're coming into rainy season, and we don't know what that's going to look like, but we need to be prepared. And now, my last is more of a comment, because I think that we all, as a board, need to be aware, it's going to be the workforce. You've got thousands of homes that are going to be rebuilt. And I know that a couple of the union's carpenters has reached out and other unions, IBEW, about apprenticeships and getting the numbers that we're going to need to really be able to rebuild, not only Altadena, but Supervisor Horvath and your side of the, in the Palisades, Malibu area. And so I want us to, and we're already doing it, but we're going to be working with with the departments to see how we can make sure that when people pull that permit in two weeks, that they have a workforce to draw from, so that they can actually rebuild and rebuild in a safe manner and timely manner. So just something for everyone to think about. And I know, Dave, you're going to be speaking in public comment, but even the materials are things we need to be cognizant of in terms of the amount that's going to be needed to rebuild. So with that, I will now Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank our panel also. It is just, it seems like a nightmare. It doesn't want to go away and coupled with all kinds of demands that this board and our departments are having to face with. I continue though to see the light at the end of the tunnel when I hear you speak. Each and every one of you out there in our community. And I want to thank our fire chief, Captain, Chief Maroni. Just saw him last night on 60 Minutes and he did a wonderful job explaining in plain English what our challenges are. And I think that's important. I hope that documentary or whatever portion of it can be saved and shared perhaps and be viewed by our viewers on our channel because I think it's very helpful as we move forward. I think what's really important is that we always, and I know the board understands this, is to always be transparent and to set expectations. I think that was said over and over again. That's kind of my worry, that some people think that they can go right back in and rebuild right away. We do have challenges with workforce and we also have some looming questions about that workforce. Many of them may not want to come out and work because of documentation or lack of documentation. And so we're, we're at a double edged sword here. It's, it's, it's going to be also very compelling along with supplies and the fact that people want to build very quickly. So I think we have to keep all of that in mind. And I hope that our, our DEO, Economic Development, all of our, all of our agencies that are involved in rebuilding in any way, keep that in mind. But we also look at gouging that can take place there too and wage theft. Because people will be desperate to have jobs. So there's also that, that possibility of, of wage theft, to get people to do the work and then not be paid by unscrupulous contractors. And we've seen it always happening at a disaster. Really critical. I'm very concerned also that we start to look at what kind of materials are out there that we can draw on that are fire resistant. And they're there. I know in my district, we have a project that actually received an award, a quality award for creating habitable places for unhoused. And these are like apartment units, but made of fire resistant material. And I think it's worthwhile for us to start looking into that and, and sharing that information, but also where they, those kinds of facilities or units could be placed either on our properties, state property or federal government property. Because we have to build fast. And much of this, I think, can be, can already be assembled, is what, is what my understanding is. So I'm hopeful that we can begin to look at that process. I'm equally concerned about where we dispose of waste, hazardous waste. And I know staff here are working on that. If anyone wants to touch base on that, I know our fire or public health. I think what's really critical for questions that I, I have is where that will be placed. How safe will it be for people who live near or work near those places? How, how items are being brought in through trucks? Also, and making sure that, that all of that is contained and that whatever we're left with, that we really try to rehabilitate that property again, if possible. So if there's, perhaps DPW?
Yes, Supervisor. In, we've been in coordination with and in discussions with EPA, Army Corps. We are making sure and, and expressing the concern about community. We do not want an impact. We've already had significant impacts to communities. And we are having conversations with them about where that waste and disposal should go. There's, to date, there's no definitive statements about where the, the debris, the fire debris will go. And we'll, we'll make sure that all your offices are, are made aware of what the intent is of those agencies, but definitely with an eye to no impacts or reduced impacts to surrounding communities.
And letting our local cities know if it is, if it's in an unincorporated, getting the word out, but also equally with the cities to have that partnership with them, I think is essential. And we know that. That's kind of been our playbook. The other thing that I thought, Dr. Ferrer, you brought up with respect to distributing air filters through LA County Office of Ed. I just have a question. There are many people impacted in this potential zone, region. And it goes far beyond just those impacted areas. And I'm wondering if some of those schools can also be, have made available to them these air filters because everything goes downstream. And many of our, at least LA, some of our Southeast cities and others I know, I've heard people telling me directly that they're, the impact is real for them.
Yeah, we, we've asked Laco to let us know if there is more demand for the air filters. I mean, the filters so that we can be responsive. So that, you know, it's, it's an ongoing issue. And what we're trying to do is get obviously the highest impacted schools, you know, the schools in Malibu, the schools in Pasadena, the schools that are reopening and are in close proximity. But we're well aware that the ash and the soot are everywhere. And that in some communities, based on how the winds went, they might not have been within the few miles of the fire, but they had a lot of, they had a lot of compromised air quality and still do. So yes, Laco is managing that. And, you know, we've really pledged to work with every school that really is making requests. Obviously, right now, the priority is to get
Is the impacted area.
To get them to the impacted areas. But we, we haven't turned, as far as I know, nobody has been turned away by Laco. Like the schools that are requesting them are basically getting them at this point. If we run out, we'll have to figure out a different strategy. But right now, we're trying to really meet the needs of young people. Those are people in our schools and in our daycares. And older people in assisted living, nursing homes, who are the groups that are most affected by poor air quality? And try to make sure that those folks are, are getting some assistance with the air purifiers.
I, I just want to say also that I want to commend Governor Gavin Newsom's office and also for making available National Guard units because we, that has been, I'm sure, helpful with the checkpoints and, and assistance to help alleviate the load on our public safety folks. But just having them around, I think, has been very helpful. I know for us in, in the Azusa City, for example, the canyons, just entree into the canyons, they were very helpful in enforcing checkpoints there. Because there are people that shouldn't be going up there and at this time, but not everyone needs that. But it's important to have their presence. So I would hope that the governor will continue to allow us to call on them. And I also want to thank the administration, the Biden Harris administration, for providing immediate assistance and ongoing. There are orders already to help us with removal of debris, I understand, and that's great. And want to see how that continues. And, and really seeing how we can recharge some of our departments and not so much ours, but also the state with DTSC, Department of Toxics and Substance Control. Because they also have their own jurisdiction and their own purview of how they look at things and cleanup. And I know, Dr. Ferrer, you and I have had that experience with them. We'd like to see that they are also doing the very best in expanding how they actually determine the area of cleanup and the kind of cleanup and making sure that all those checks and balances are there. I think that's, that's really critical for us. And again, thank you to all our, our men and women, our families, our volunteers, and everybody that has been helpful in this whole chaotic mess that just bore down on us. I don't think this was, this was manmade by any of us. But I do think there are some climate issues out there. But again, these are things that I think we can tackle. And this board, I know, is very responsible for wanting to do the right thing. So thank you all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much. And I just want to echo all of the accolades expressed by my colleagues to recognize all of the she-ros and heroes who have shown their heroism over these last couple of weeks. And we all respect you and thank you. Just to kind of piggyback a couple, on a couple of comments made by my colleagues before I get into some of the points on the motion specifically. Madam Chair, having met your Altadena Town Council, community residents who know every nook and cranny of their community. It was a pleasure to spend time with them on Saturday. So I just wanted to say that.
And I passed that on to them when I saw them on Sunday.
I appreciate that. To Supervisor Solis's point, putting on my AQ&amp;B hat, I agree. And I was going to raise it as we, you know, talk about, I think, the read-in motion on debris removal. Making sure that existing overburdened communities, our AB 617 communities, are also informed and protected as we remove debris and will very likely move it into their communities because that's where the haulers are and all of the places where we send debris is. So making sure that we are mindful of our existing overburdened communities as we talk about debris removal. Public health. On my, in my experience Saturday, I saw a woman in an evacuation zone, no mask, no rubber gloves, cleaning the outside of her windows. And I thought, I hope she's also, I hope she's not unmasked, no gloves, no protective gear, cleaning from the inside out. And so our teams, comms teams, all of my colleagues on the press conferences, the press releases, their, their social media, we work overtime trying to communicate with our constituents. And, you know, we, we experienced this during COVID, you know, so what are we going to do to make sure that people who are impacted at least have the information to inform their decision about how quickly they return and inform their decision about how they return? So you're not washing the outside of your windows with no mask on. We were all masked as we were going through the community and she wasn't. So what, what can we all do to try to get the information out? Because I'm afraid of that.
Yeah, thank you so much, Supervisor Mitchell. And, you know, first I do want to thank all of you, particularly Supervisor Horvath and Supervisor Barker. Every single meeting I've gone through, gone to, or my team has gone to, you have stressed the importance of people taking protections. You know, I will say I take very seriously the desire by the board to make it as easy as possible. I think this was true during COVID and it's equally true now for people to take those protections. So making sure that everyone who needs it has the PPE that makes sense for them to have and has those information sheets that describe how to do this carefully, I think is core to what we're doing. And I want to especially express my appreciation to Kevin and the chief for being clear with my staff about where are those checkpoints? So that really, almost nobody going back into evacuation zones should not see a public health person and have an opportunity to get a kit and some information and get your questions answered. I, I think this is a situation where personal touch actually is going to count. I, I appreciate that everyone's helping us. A big shout out to Lenny and the folks at the CEO's office for all the work on the communications with, you know, using all our social media channels, being in multiple languages. But I do think the personal touch matters a lot because people's lives have been completely upended and it's very hard to stay focused on the whole host of issues that you're facing. So I think it's easy to forget about taking protection when you're cleaning your house because you're very grateful you have a house that you're cleaning. So we'd like to be, you know, really as active as we can and being there when people are going in with the equipment, making it super easy for them to get hold of that PPE while we're doing all the messaging that you all have helped us with and that I think social media has helped us with. Obviously, we're also, now that schools are going to be back in session in some of the areas, we're going to use our school communities. That's one place where it's been effective in the past, as well as our daycare facilities. You know, as people are getting back into resuming their routine operations and, and using again our trusted, you know, I'm going to call them our, our trusted neighborhood partners. We'll be sending out information to our community-based partners, similar to what we did during the pandemic, because we learned that those community partners are actually going to make a huge difference in getting the word out. Right now, we're really concentrating as people are going back in, particularly to burn areas, making it super easy for them to get information from us, get the equipment that they need and be able to ask their questions.
I appreciate you mentioning childcare. With my LA County First Five hat on, they, in collaboration with the County Childcare Alliance, have estimated 20,000 Angelenos between zero and five were impacted. And when you think about family daycare, particularly Franklin, Altadena, and even in the evacuation areas, if they are trying to reopen because it's their livelihood, if their homes weren't directly impacted, making sure they have the information so people are sending their youngest child back into a family daycare that understands what it takes to clean and, and, and make it safe. We've talked, we've heard a lot about schools, but the childcare industry that had not really recovered from COVID, given all the seats we lost and recognizing the number of family daycare, licensed family daycare across LA County, I'm concerned about them as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that concern. And, you know, I'm grateful that we have the Office of Early Care and Education at the Department of Public Health because it's made it much easier for us to be right there with the childcare providers and the families who have young children to make sure that all daycares, you know, family daycares, as well as the daycare centers, as they're reopening or as they remained open, but were impacted by debris, have the tools they need to clean up. That's what I was saying. I mean, we really concentrated on the air purifiers, getting good information. And I want to thank Deborah Coleman and her team because they've been really instrumental. I also want to mention that the other issue with the daycare providers is we had some, a lot of daycare providers who lost their facilities. And Deborah and her team are also working to make sure they're connected to SBE and that we're working very quickly. Because as you said, we already lost a lot of seats. We can't really afford to lose a lot more. Also, they get support as well. And again, you know, I want to emphasize it. It's been really helpful to have our supervisors messaging that this isn't about whether you were licensed or unlicensed, or you were doing something in your home. If you had a small business and it was impacted, you're going to be eligible for some support because that's made a huge difference there as well. So I want to just thank our supervisors for the consistent messaging on that.
And that we'll all have to continue to do it because she was out there washing windows with nothing on. Yes.
Yes, Supervisor Mitchell, thank you for that comment regarding education to make sure that the returning residents protect their health and safety. I also want to use this opportunity for an educational campaign about evacuation warnings and orders. And then the necessity when you're under an evacuation warning or order, for the order to be able to leave. Far too many stories I've heard of people who did not leave during the evacuation order. And our firefighters and our sheriff deputies had to evacuate those people. And for our firefighters, that meant that they were taking away from their ability to protect homes because they were prioritizing correctly life before property. And the ability for people to leave even under a warning. You don't have to wait for the evacuation order to leave. People must protect themselves because we can rebuild the homes, but the 27 people that died that day can never be brought back. And the Calvin family that was showcased on 60 Minutes and his sister Evelyn, that was absolutely heartbreaking. It's such a tragedy that 27 people have lost their lives.
Since you've raised that, LA Times article talked about a family, no relation, as far as I know. I believe the last name was Mitchell, whose elder father was disabled, I think in a wheelchair, and the brother, I want to say had cerebral palsy. I could be wrong. And it's the, the conversations with their, and the, the media's reporting comments from other family members who said that they said they were waiting to be evacuated. And I thought about that. We saw the images of the skilled nursing facilities, people being We saw the images of the skilled nursing facilities, people being evacuated, but, but when people are in private homes, um, who aren't able to physically evacuate on their own, what is that messaging and, and what is that, what's the expectation in terms of who is supposed to be there to support if, if a public entity, as opposed to them and other family members? It really struck me when I read that article.
And another example is someone, um, the parish that was, had Alzheimer's, that was disoriented. I mean, these, these are questions that are, I, I don't know that we're going to have an answer.
I, I agree.
And that's, I think, the most frustrating.
I agree.
I would like to offer that I think the county family should come together, and we need a database to track people who have mobility challenges or health challenges and try to partner with LASD and, you know, maybe even Metro, getting a way to get people out of harm's way, maybe before the beginning of the event. So when we know that we have the, the worst PDS predicted, that we get in early and get those folks somewhere else because trying to do it during the emergency is very, very difficult. But so proud of my firefighters, the women and men of my department, two skilled nursing facilities. We moved 500 people along with our sheriff's deputies out of harm's way, thankfully, but still I am devastated that we lost 27 people thus far, possibly more.
And I absolutely applaud that work. And, and it might, elevating the question wasn't really, it really is a global question. When we look at the aging of our society, people wanting to, to age in their own homes and wanting to have that right, but also as a community, as a community, we're not prepared for the, the grain of our population. And this is an example, if people are maintained at their own home and in certain situations like this, you know, what are we to do? Getting, thank you for that. Getting directly to item 21. I want to echo the thanks to all of the levels of government from the Biden administration and their pledge with regard to federal dollars. Want to thank our former vice president for her presence in Altadena yesterday. Appreciate the governor's on-the-boots presence, his executive actions, and the legislature's swift action. I, I know that there's an extraordinary budget session with two budget bills that are going through the process that will, could be heard as soon as tomorrow and pass as early as Thursday. That, you know, in the budget landscape is like supersonic fast, so that's amazing. And, and hoping that based on what I've read thus far, that the funding will be allocated directly to local government so we can move quickly because we certainly need the resources to consider undergrounding utilities in high fire areas. And we hopefully could get and use some support for mortgage forbearance and low-interest loans. And again, needing financial support to help both our impacted workers and businesses recover. And so again, I think local agencies and our partners working hand-in-hand with affected communities in the zones really have the best sense of on-the-ground impact, greatest need, and the best pathways for delivering. Um, I had the opportunity, um, over the weekend to have conversation with several national philanthropic leaders. We've talked about, you know, working with LAYER to, to access public dollars, but several national philanthropic leaders who have, um, long history. I was reminded that Katrina was now 20 years ago. I got a copy of a, the 10-year anniversary Katrina report where I really was able to fully grasp, like, just like we have the stages of grief, we have stages after catastrophes from response to recovery to rebuild and how philanthropy can and has historically played a role in how we move through those stages. But in, in reading that report and talking to these national leaders who have been directly involved, again, in Katrina recovery, Mississippi Delta, all of the southern states that have experienced, you know, hurricanes and tornadoes and loss of, of human life and property that is equal to what we've experienced here, a couple of things were important to me, that natural disasters are not felt equally. And low-income communities, communities of color, seniors, renters, and people experiencing homelessness are often hit the hardest and recover the slowest. And so as we advocate for public and philanthropic dollars, I think it's important to send a message that recovery funding and services really must be accessible, inclusive, and equitable to ensure that those who have historically been marginalized by government aren't, continue to be left behind. And looking at those examples and the reason that they had to focus that effort in some of those other recovery areas just reminded me of how important that is. You know, we know that many low-wage workers, including those in service industries, hospitality and caregiving, have lost their jobs or hours due to business closures from the fire. And so recovery efforts must include targeted unemployment benefits, job training and business support programs to help effective workers regain stability. And special attention must be played to our undocumented workers who contribute to our economy and clearly will be ineligible for federal assistance based on what we've heard in the last 24 hours. So, um, as our chief has talked about, you know, um, fire, um, the new building materials, as we talk about price gouging, price gouging, that, that ripple effect extends to include rebuilding materials as well as labor and what it will cost to rebuild. So making sure that we continue to elevate those issues and that in our legislative and budget advocacy, we continue to elevate those issues. So there are resources spent to allow us to avoid the price gouging, both in a, in a, not only to prevent it, to talk about it, but to bring forth, you know, legal action and make sure that people know that they can be arrested and prosecuted if they continue to take advantage of people that way. Looking forward to support the motion, and thanks for the opportunity, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And two, two things. And one, Fizia, you're going to report back on the database in terms of bringing something together, which department would be best to, um, present that?
Yes.
Because I think that's a very good idea.
That report will go out today, Supervisor.
Okay. And then, second, I wanted to publicly again thank our Parks and Rec Director, Norma Garcia Gonzalez. You talked about childcare. I went out and I saw parents so grateful that their child had a place to go. And the impact this has had on families, but on the youth is, I can't even, I can't even put it into words. The impact is deep. And so I just want to thank the Parks and Rec family, led by Norma, for doing an incredible job. Over 600 children, they had a waiting list, a waiting list. And one mother said, thanked the county because it gave her the ability to go and navigate trying to rebuild their lives. So I just wanted to say that. Supervisor Hahn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, this, this horrific disaster has certainly highlighted our first responders and just the heroic actions that they're performing every single day. And every wind gust, I think, entire LA County takes a collective gasp and sends up a collective prayer. So we're, we're, we're all on heightened alert going forward. But it asks, it's also, as we've heard, has shown a great leaning in by so many others in the county that are responding in a way that, that the generosity is, is overwhelming. The amount of donations that are coming in are spectacular from across the country. So this item is we're seeking state and federal assistance for our wildfires. Seems like we're, uh, you know, we're, we have, definitely we have an end with California Governor Newsom, right? He's really already indicated that he wants to help us, support us, be there for us. I think I'm most concerned about our request of this federal government and this new administration. Although it was interesting during the inauguration, Senator Amy Klobuchar, in her opening remarks, talked about Los Angeles and our firefighters. I think a couple of the prayers that were offered yesterday also embraced our collective grief and disaster out here. But I'm concerned at the potential strings that we've been hearing that might be connected to this disaster assistance. It was disappointing to see some of the new administration folks on some of the Sunday shows specifically blaming our unpreparedness and, you know, kind of repeating some of the narrative that we heard about empty reservoirs and empty hydrants and, you know, undeployed, you know, fire engines. What, how are, how are, what's our strategy to, um, I don't know who's going to answer this. What's our strategy with this federal government in this request? Are we feeling that we have to, you know, make? And by the way, you know, Supervisor Solis and I were, were both served in Congress, and I don't know about you, but when I was there, there were never strings attached to any federal assistance to disasters, right?
You're joking.
I mean-
There's always strings attached to everything, even from the state.
Well, pretty much-
So define strings.
Well, well, when I, when we voted on relief, whether it was a hurricane or a mass shooting or, uh, you know, whatever disaster tornadoes, we pretty much agreed to a certain amount that would be available. I don't think we talked about, I don't think we talked about a particular state's, um, policies or, uh, you know, tax codes, for instance, as I, for my time in, in Congress. I can't speak to-
Because I just know that there's never, there's never a blank check written, even under this administration, and there shouldn't be, by the way. So I don't know when you, people are saying strings, it's not helping our case when we're assuming and, and saying automatically that we are going to be punished when we don't know what that's going to look like.
String-free. Well, we've, I'm only, I'm only operating under what I have specifically heard, the words that have come out of people's mouths as it relates to giving Los Angeles County disaster relief. So I'm just wondering, um, how, how we're, um, you know, what's our strategy in the request? And I understand that the new president may be coming out here at, at your request, Supervisor Barker, to, to tour the disaster, um, area, but we've heard some pretty pointed words that suggest if certain things didn't change, we might not get the money. So I don't know. I just feel like that's kind of how we need to look at this request.
Yeah, let me take a stab at answering, and I can let our panel members place a finer point on it. Let me start off by saying, Samara just informed me that we did meet, our Legislative Affairs Team did meet with White House staff over the weekend to re, to identify, emphasize what some of our needs are. I think in terms of our relationship and us getting help from the federal government, I really do believe that this is spearheaded, it's in the purview of the electeds. And we always hear people say, you know, we want to reach across the aisle to see, you know, how we can better collaborate together. So I think that that's going to be very important for us in LA County. And then I think the second part is oftentimes, not always, is when the elected administration changes, the professional staff stays in place. And so we have developed some longstanding partnerships, you know, our mental health department, our public health, our health services, we have, they know what our issues are. They know even in our pre-emergency times what our statutory and regulatory challenges were. And so the hope is, is that even though we do see this change in administration, that some of the professional staff stays in place so that we're not starting over from scratch explaining why we might need a waiver or why we're asking for something different in terms of a statute. But I do think that it starts with the policymakers and that it's reinforced by your professional staff at both the county level and the federal level.
I just think we, again, I've heard specific comments about some of the, that some of the narratives that we're circling as a reason to not give us the relief that we need. So I think we should just be prepared, and maybe that's an opportunity for our fire department and our Office of Emergency Management to sort of preempt maybe some of those, which I consider some of them false narratives, in an attempt to, um, you know, garner our, the support that I think we need because I do believe that's going to be something that will be part of the mix as this administration looks to help us in our, in our, in our great time of need. So those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I just want to add just a little something. I know that, you know, typically when there are disasters, and I remember quite frankly Hurricane Katrina, and the fact that the, there was inadequate provisions made available for flooding, they didn't really prepare well. And so I think what it causes local government to do and state is to think about, okay, if we're going to rebuild, these are the provisions and things that we're going to up the ante on and the standards. And I believe that'll be the case for like forest management and also for water usage because we get criticized in California because we care more about the salmon fish than we do about people. That's a false narrative, we know that. But I would just say, in my opinion, the way I view it is that we are going to have to up our ante in terms of fire-resistant formulas and rebuilding and where we build, and people may not like that. There are people that may not like that, oh, well, you're not going to be able to build 10 houses on that slope now because it is a fire danger. And what happens? So those things, I, I believe are going to cause us, anti-councils, and others to kind of think about how we, how we redo that. So I think we, we kind of have to come to some agreement even with our own, our own entities here.
Right. And again, I just think we need to be prepared in this request that we kind of address a lot of that, how, how we planning to rebuild, how we were prepared, and how this, of course, was the, this disaster was of a magnitude that no one has ever seen before. So I just think we need to be prepared to, um, you know, make our case in a way a little bit more than just sending a letter of request. I just think we need to be prepared to answer some of the criticisms that I think are going to come our way as it relates to this money.
Yeah, and in, in response to Supervisor Solis, I know that in talking to the governor, I, because we know that we are going to have to put together, and you've said it, Chief Maroni, a plan for hardening the homes. And with that comes an expense, an additional expense. So the question is, how can we offset that cost for marginalized communities that are either underinsured or no insurance, that aren't sure whether they're going to be able to even get the capital to build? And then we add on to another expense. So I did put that bug in the governor's ear because it's going to impact communities. I mean, there are some parts of Altadena that are going to say, fine, we're going to do that anyway, money's no object, but there are other parts of Altadena that are going to say that, it's kind of like the construction loan. A construction loan's eight to nine percent. That is going to, for some people, say, I can't afford to rebuild. So we're looking at how we put together low-interest loans, like the VA, for those individuals that otherwise wouldn't be able to, to afford it. But I agree with you 100% Supervisor Solis because the reality is the proximity to the foothills, that is going to come back. And 50 years from now, we want to make sure that we did everything we could to, to make it happen. And I can only speak for myself, I'm looking forward to working with this administration. Supervisor Hahn? Supervisor Hahn? I'm looking forward to working with this administration because it's not only Altadena, and it's not only Palisades, it's Palisverdes. This issue is across the county, and for the next four years, this is the administration we have to work with. And so I would hope that we would come at it from the standpoint of what do you need from us to, um, to, to show that we in fact are justified in what we're asking for versus just a handout?
That's what I said.
No, I understand, but I mean, I guess it's all in how you say it, because I don't want to-
I just said I think we need to be prepared to address some of the criticisms that I've been hearing coming our way. Let's just be thoughtful in how we make this request.
Correct. All right. Mr.- Mr., Executive Officer, do we have any members of the public?
Yes, well, the following individuals, please come forward and staff will assist you. Daphne Bradford, Dave Sorm, and Ray Baca. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address item 21B, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is, just left, Colin Campbell. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Honorable LA Board of Supervisors, item 21B, may we use the $238.5 billion federal budget for artificial general intelligence to assist with fires as President Donald Trump has ordered us to create the Department of Government Efficiency, Dodge? We can use some of these funds rebuilding homes and infrastructure optimized for fire, safety, and healthcare and justice. President Trump requests the dream of Dr. Martin Luther King to be realized. My team will customize the version of the 57th Information Aggressor Squadron, U.S. Cyber Command, and limit visibility to the individual jurisdiction. A key requirement is no one is allowed to use this tool to harm but to heal, as in the Hippocratic Oath that medical doctors take when they graduate. I sent screenshots of the Oracle Cloud infrastructure that I set up for this purpose that I did the same in the summer of 2019 for Project Jedi at Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Roy Humphreys, your line is open. You may begin.
Okay, thanks to Supervisor Barker for being the only adult in the room, and as to other supervisors, comparing fires to floods, it seems to be an oxymoron. California has had water managed problems since Columbus. The disposal management issue is a no-brainer. Supervisor Barker's 5th District, high desert, open areas is the dumping site of choice, and of course, done the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Eric Previn, your line is open. You may begin.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and of course, my heart goes out to the families and the folks who lost their, their homes. And I appreciate the board trying to strategize about how, in the face of, you know, a new administration and a conservative group, how to behave strategically. Here's, here's a good idea, and I think all of us should, should follow this. This is a time for fastidious, careful fascism, okay? Now, I realize that is not our usual stature with these assholes, but we have to do what we have to do to get her done, okay? You saw all the idiots and trillionaires clustered around him, all of them had said horrible things about, you know, it's time to do a little, I think we need to send the whole group in for a meeting in Washington, we take him out to dinner, Han, you know, we get the wine going, everybody needs to do their part to get this done, okay? And it's not a joke. We have a real problem on our hands, and we need federal support. There are lots of, you know, strings attached, but we're going to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ian Jamison, your line is open. You may begin.
Yeah, hi. I was in the meeting earlier. I did not participate in the disruption, and I, in addition to Lynnwood City Council member Juan Munoz Guevara and other members of the public, were not allowed back into the building. I'm wondering why you, Chair Barker, are showing such disdain for state law, the Brown Act, which requires that we be allowed to speak in person on these agenda items when we showed up in person. And also, just so everybody in District 5 knows, Catherine Barker voted for the vaccine mandate under which LA firefighters left the department rather than have to face pharma-fascism from this absurdly forked tongued, double-faced chair of the board. And, yeah, we lost valuable LA, LA County Fire Department resources because of this board's actions and screw all of you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Zella Knight, your line is open. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and esteemed county supervisors. I'm Zella Knight. My generational family home was destroyed in the Eaton Fire in Altadena. So to Chair Barker, thank you so much. 60-plus years we've been connected in a variety of ways with your mentors and others in the effort to save lives. Thank you. To also Supervisor Horvath, thank you. Supervisor Mitchell, thank you so much for uplifting in regards to the effect and effects of marginalized communities. I want to drill down specifically in regards to the disabled. We have to do a better job in regards to communication and education despite what was emphasized in regards to the evacuation order and warning. You're taking a presumption in regards to everybody that can respond or get that type of device, specifically for those who are disabled. Many of those folks did not understand what was going on, not because of-
Thank you. Next speaker.
-something to name.
Moderator, next speaker.
And Madam Chair, there are no further speakers to address the board.
Thank you. We will now go to in-person speakers. Please begin.
Good afternoon again. I'm Daphne Bradford. Good afternoon to all the supervisors. Supervisor Barker, I met you at the Nathan Hockman swearing-in, so I've been listening, and I came down here to ask to work with you on the education loss that there's going to be while families try to build their lives back during COVID. I can go back to that, a lot of the teachers didn't want to take the vaccine, so I came back in and I was able to fill in the gap, so there was a less learning loss for some students. So I was here last week with the Columbia Memorial Space Museum and Space Center, and I would like to possibly work with you to include some of the kids in Altadena in what is going to be a spectacular learning opportunity here from Downey to our District 2 at the Science Center. And I'm really good at it. I'm one of the top educators in the nation, and I'd like to meet with you on that, because it's going to be huge learning loss, and I can do virtual, in person, we can make it work, but I'm very concerned about that recovery.
Yeah, thank you. Anders will talk to you. Thank you very much for that. I remember you coming last week.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Dave Sorm. I am representing United Contractors of California. We're here to help. We were the group that sent out the letter to each one of your board members, offering to do whatever it takes to help you. Last Thursday at 6:15 in the morning, Mark Pastrilla, Director of Public Works, gave me a call, asked me to show up at the Fremont headquarters of Public Works. I did. I spent about eight hours strategizing with the staff there. This is based upon, I used to work there a long time ago in their design division, roughly 10 years, and I've been a contractor ever since for the last 30-some years. I mean, we went into detail so much that we provided drainage maps, surface drainage maps for the Palisades and Altadena area, down to the Catch Basin drainage area. I think it would be a great help to you if you could get a hold of those. If you need to, you can contact me, but we are here to help, and Ray Baca from United Contractors will expound on that a little bit more.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, and honorable supervisors. My name is Ray Baca. I am the Regional Director for United Contractors. We are a trade association that represents construction contractors throughout the state. I'd like to read to you excerpts from a letter that we sent to each of you on January the 10th. "United Contractors Board of Directors, our contractor network, along with our industry partners, the Southern California District Council of Laborers, wish to express that our hearts go out to you and your constituents in solidarity during this catastrophic fire emergency. The region is facing an unprecedented, unprecedented challenge in terms of logistics, resources, and recovery. Our organizations represent perhaps the largest resource available in service of these challenges. We are, we represent hundreds of union signatory contractors and thousands of workers that work under prevailing wage or are qualified and experienced to perform work in almost any situation, all of whom stand ready to serve in an expedited manner as the fires are fought to their conclusion."
Thank, thank you. Madam Chair, there are no other in-person speakers to address the board.
Seeing no other speakers and seeing no other requests from my colleagues to speak, moved by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by myself. Mr. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries, five to zero.
We'll now move on to item number six, rental protections and short-term rental resolution following proclamation of existence of a local emergency for the January 2025 windstorm and critical fire events, which was held by Supervisor Horvath. Again, for members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 to comment on this item. Supervisor Horvath?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As we undergo the most catastrophic wildfires in our county's history, we as the county must act swiftly to respond and rebuild. We still don't know the full impact of these fires, but for the survivors of this unprecedented devastation, there's an immediate need to ensure they have basic necessities: food, clothing, and yes, shelter. In terms of shelter, we need to remove as many barriers to shelter as we can. At the same time, we cannot make our housing and homelessness crises even worse. Solving one emergency cannot come at the expense of another, and that's what's before us today. First, renter protections. The resolution before us ensures that anyone generous enough to take in a victim of the fires and/or their animal companion will not be evicted for doing so. We shouldn't evict those helping others in need over a technicality on their lease. I want to thank all the Angelenos who extend their homes to those who have lost and suffered so much. And to landlords, I want to be very clear, we will not tolerate using this crisis as a reason to evict tenants or to price gouge. For those who choose to do so, the district attorney and our attorney general have been very clear, they will prosecute you to the fullest extent of the law. I also, on a personal note, want to thank Senator Perez and Assembly Member Brian for taking action at a state, at the state level, introducing legislation to provide additional renter protections, something that I fully support. Second, short-term rentals. We're lifting some restrictions on short-term rentals for two reasons. One, we need to help those in need as quickly as possible. And two, placing displaced fire victims in short-term rentals keeps vital housing stock available on the market. We must be cognizant of possible unintended consequences to well-intended legislation. We cannot make the actions today a zero-sum game or a race to the bottom. The amendments I'm introducing to the ordinance do just that. As we lift restrictions to our short-term rental regulations, we must make clear that those restrictions are specifically for those who have either been impacted by the fire or are here to help in the recovery efforts. If we get people in these two categories into short-term rentals during this time, it allows for much-needed rental housing stock to be available on the market. This is a time for all Angelenos to come together, to step up and do their part to help victims, our first responders, and those who aid in recovery efforts. It is our job as government to support those efforts, remove barriers, and ensure that we recover and rebuild. So the changes that I would make, beginning in Section 2, it would now read, "Certain restrictions on short-term rentals as set forth in Title VII of the County Code shall be suspended to allow the increased use of STRs as a means of providing additional housing for those impacted by the local emergency. Short-term rental hosts will be allowed to offer and advertise more than one short-term rental for use by people who are impacted by the 20, the January 2025 windstorm and critical fire events, or who are aiding in recovery efforts. Offer and advertise accessory dwelling units, ADUs, for use as an STR by people who are impacted by the January 2025 windstorm and critical fire events, or who are aiding in the recovery efforts. Offer and advertise vacation rentals for use as an STR by people who are impacted by the January 2025 windstorm and critical fire events, or who are aiding the recovery efforts. Offer unlimited unhosed stays exceeding the current 90-night maximum for use by people who are impacted by the January 2025 windstorm and critical fire events, or who are aiding in recovery efforts. The short-term rental host and platform shall be responsible for confirming the guest's eligibility." Thank you for allowing me to introduce these amendments, and I hope that we will be able to accept them and vote unanimously to support.
Supervisor Han?
Thank you, and thank you, County Council, for the quick and thoughtful work on this resolution. This resolution to provide enhanced eviction protections for tenants and ease restrictions on short-term rentals is a solid first step in making sure that we're doing all we can to get as many displaced people housed as we can and keep them housed for as long as it takes. It's important that tenants who have opened their homes to families and pets, which may not be allowed on their lease, can continue to open their home without fear of eviction. It's also important to cut through some of the red tape around short-term rentals to allow owners to list as many as they have and lift that 90-night max, maximum so that those who may not have a home to go back to aren't worried about where they will sleep in a month or two. And I see, as Supervisor Horvath mentioned, there's some language added to limit or propose to limit the suspension of short-term rental regulations to those impacted by the fires and those aiding the recovery. I think that makes sense to balance our immediate need for emergency housing with our ongoing need for affordable, permanent housing. You know, the people of LA County have been showing up for each other since day one of this disaster, and I know they will continue to do so. And this, I believe, resolution puts the tenants and the landlords on the same page as we all move together toward ultimate wholeness and healing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank you and also Supervisor Horvath for bringing the resolution to us today on rental protections and short-term rentals to prevent evictions and provide housing opportunities for those impacted by the January 2025 windstorms and critical fire events, local emergency. We understand that there are several emails and public comments submitted requesting assurance that the suspension of the certain provisions of the short-term rentals should only be to assist those impacted by the January 2025 windstorms and critical fire events. And we know the impacted are of different and various income levels, and some will have more options than others. We've had tremendous needs here, including from, well, we've heard many tremendous needs, including from property owners, domestic workers, and seniors on fixed income. Our district was also impacted. We also had trees that fell on roofs and roofs that had to be replaced, and power outages that impacted the habability of housing units. I am wholeheartedly in support of the amendments provided by Supervisor Horvath and would like to emphasize that the rental protections will be for those impacted by the January windstorms and critical fires, as well as those helping with the rebuilding efforts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Executive Officer, would you please call those four individuals that have requested to speak on this item?
Well, the following individuals, please come forward and staff will assist you. Jesús Rojas, Mara O'Neil, and Noah Suarez-Sikes. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address item 6, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker?
Rosalind Castle, your line is open. You may begin. Please stand by. Lawrence Davison, your line is open. You may begin.
All right, thank you, Board. I just wanted to comment real quick and thank you guys for your efforts and everything and all the, my heart goes out to the family in the county during this time. Just a reminder, and it was spoken before, about something overshadowing one disaster to another. This has to do with the pandemic and the rent relief program. I went, this is going on two years since I applied for that, and I applied just recently, last year with, with my landlord. We were approved in May, and the funds were to go into that, but when they found out that I was in the process of being evicted by the landlord, which had to be done just, just to ensure the landlord's, you know, whatever it had to be done, that disqualified me immediately, and they withdrew the fund from being deposited into the landlord's account, but since my family, homeless. I was homeless because of that, and been homeless, and now I'm affected by these fires also. But to my point is that the-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The programs that are available for these things.
Moderator, next speaker.
Eric Previn, your line is open. You may begin. You may begin.
Thinking about short-term solutions and, you know, adjusting the regulations, I know Supervisors love to make it a little easier for people to go inside, and I appreciate it. There is one idea. At 1-2833 Ventura Boulevard, you have a fully functional hotel for which the city of L.A., who has eliminated virtual comments at their meetings crazily, but has paid a half a million dollars to have it all fixed up the way it was. It was a project room key property. It's right next to an Arowan. Horvath, or Barker, whoever has it now, it's ramen in CD4. It was all, the dirty work was done by Krikorian and those guys, but it's now in her district. It's a great idea. We could have that thing up and running in no time. So it's with a great heart and a great cheer that I say, "Go for it." Supervisor Horvath, are you able to jot that down? It's the Sportsman's Lodge Hotel in Studio City, right near Coldwater and Harbor Westlake, a giant fundraising facility. So I do think this is a good move for everybody.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Juan Diaz, your line is open. You may begin. Juan Diaz, your line is open. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Barker and Supervisors. My name is Juan Munoz, and I am calling on behalf of United Year Local 11. First, we want to extend our thoughts to all those impacted by these devastating fires. And as you know, this incident will only further impact an already existing housing shortage. We want to ensure that if we are lifting these regulations on short-term rentals that we all worked so hard on to adopt last year, that we only do so to impact, to help those impacted by these fires. It is with that that we are supportive and greatly appreciate Supervisor Horvath's amendments to the short-term rental provisions of this item, and we therefore ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rosalind Castle, your line is open. You may begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I am here on behalf of Tesla and the Musk Foundation. I am the treasurer. We are proposing the deployment of Tesla ReBoggin, which is a 20-passenger solar-powered electric van, has communal tiny homes, up to 11 residents are able to be housed in each van. Entry and exit is managed by retinal scan and retinal verification. I'm currently on the ground at the L.A. Convention Center, and what we found in our survey is that if you don't have a physical ID because you didn't have it with you when you left the fire, there's almost no services available for you. So you can get into the housing, but you're kind of stuck here without any way to get any further. So this would be our suggestion, particularly in dealing with the permanent. Thank you.
Dariqa Gibson, your line is open. You may begin. Dariqa Gibson, your line is open. You may begin. You may begin.
Moderator, let's move to the next speaker, please.
Roy Humphries, your line is open. You may begin.
Thank you. And as I had emailed all the Supervisors, something that, because we have to realize that we have limited resources and this money flow is not going to go on, this is going to take years and years to mitigate, that need to take people and put them in tent cities, always put up on the, I mentioned the Santa Anita Race Track, but you have other sites throughout Los Angeles County to immediately put these people in, I will call, a stable housing environment, get them off the streets and taken care of. Again, you've got the National Guard and the U.S. Military can come in and assist in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Thank you. We will now go to in-person speakers. Please begin.
Hello. Jesús Rojas for Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. Section One of this resolution is now unnecessary as Governor Youson passed an executive order on Friday, January 17, that already addressed unauthorized individuals passing this resolution will only cause more confusion now that the government's order has been issued and covered by the media. Even worse, this resolution includes unauthorized pets that will likely cause many rental housing providers to lose their property, insurances that will force many out of business. Also, this resolution has none of the necessary safeguards contained in it to make sure that it is wrongfully abused. If the Supervisors want to move forward with Section One, then it must be revised before it passes with the following four revisions to ensure it is appropriately applied. First, the reference of two unauthorized pets must be removed. Second, the existing renters shall provide immediate reading notice upon entry to the owner. Any unauthorized individual-
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Mara O'Neil. I'm a policy analyst for Better Neighbors L.A., a coalition of hosts, tenants, housing activists, and community members focused on preserving long-term housing by curbing illegal short-term rentals in Southern California. I'm a resident of Supervisor District Three, and I'm speaking in support of Item Six as amended. Unfortunately, we did some research, and we've seen short-term renters speculators taking advantage of the current crisis by raising prices. Even though some short-term rental platforms claim to be cracking down on price gouging, we found 337 listings in unincorporated L.A. County that have raised their prices more than 10% immediately following the fires. For example, we even found one host, Andy, who has five listings in the county, all of which increased their rates over 250% following the fires. Ensuring that this emergency resolution applies only to those displaced by the fires or those assisting in recovery will prevent these speculators from taking advantage of the situation.
And I'd love to make sure that we have that list to provide to County Council because we also have authority through our emergency declaration and County Council and our Department of Consumer and Business Affairs. So if we could get that list, I'd appreciate it.
Next speaker.
All right. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Noah Suarez-Sikes, and I'm an organizer for Better Neighbors L.A. I'm a resident of Supervisor District One. Hello, Supervisor Solis. I'm speaking to support Item Six as amended. As originally written, we were concerned that the emergency resolution would incentivize landlords and hosts to mass-convert long-term units into short-term rentals. Meanwhile, thousands of people displaced by the fires and needing shelter who need long-term rentals for their family to live in might find that those apartments, houses, and ADUs were turned into tourist lodgings. I'd like to urge the Board to pass the resolution as amended by Supervisor Horvath to limit short-term rentals only to those affected by these devastating winds and fires, as well as those aiding in the recovery, ensuring that they get the housing they need to get back on their feet. STRs are known to have a variety of negative effects on the surrounding housing market, which is why this Board unanimously passed the county's STR ordinance last year. In L.A. County, STRs have taken 2,800 critical homes off the market. We appreciate Supervisor Horvath working with us to introduce language, as Beverly Hills and Santa Monica have, to restrict the rental of these STRs to L.A. County residents displaced by the fires in order to ensure that fire victims, not speculators, benefit.
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no other persons to address the Board.
Thank you. The item is before us, moved by Supervisor Horvath. I will second it. Executive Office, as amended, as amended. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries, five to zero.
We'll move on to item number nine, the Armed Security Guard Services for L.A. County Area Contracts, which was held by Supervisor Hahn. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero to comment on this item. Supervisor Hahn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we have Sky Patrick here with us. Colleagues, the Board letter before us is approving five contracts for as-needed armed security guard services at various library facilities. The contracts will be awarded to Intercon Security Services System. Previously, we had these services through our Sheriff's Department, and currently, security guard services are provided at 25 high-risk libraries throughout the county. I know, I just wanted to, I have some questions. I'm not all that comfortable. I know we've had sheriff's deputies in the past. I'm just not always comfortable with armed folks at our libraries. I just kind of feel like that doesn't go together. You know, our libraries are certainly safe, welcoming spaces for people of all ages. I just wanted to understand a little bit, again, I didn't delve into it when we had the sheriff's deputies there. First of all, tell us why we went from sheriff's deputies to these contracted-out security contracts.
Thank you for your question, Supervisor. It's important to note that this is really a multi-pronged approach. We still maintain our sheriff deputies at our libraries. We currently have four sheriff deputies, but we have two long-time, out on long-time leave without backup support. So these are enhancements. So we have the, what I call, the tan shirts, the sheriffs, the white shirts, which are SSOs, and then we have the gray shirts, which are really the enhanced for the remaining 19 locations to total the 25 locations.
Which color shirts are these?
These are the, these are kind of the gray shirts.
So I thought the sheriff's deputies were pulling out. I thought it was Sheriff Luna's desire to get his personnel out of county buildings. I sort of thought this is why this happened. No?
Supervisor, that may be the case. So we understand that their contract is expiring, but we still need the support. So we needed to have this enhanced security to tide us over until hopefully we are able to bring back more social workers in our libraries, which is ultimately where we're hoping to head.
And this contract is costing us what, or is costing your library department?
This contract, do you have the actual cost?
So currently, our current contract with the L.A. Sheriff's Department is $5.5 million. We would save about $700,000.
So you're saving money with contracting out?
We are. I think it's helpful to note that prior to the pandemic, we were at about $2.2 million, which, you know, this Board provided us a designated fund for that. That money is gone, and it has increased now, it's doubled in costs. So this is a way to mitigate those costs and bring it down, about $750,000.
And what is considered a high-risk library? And how are these libraries evaluated? How do they get that designation?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we have two different kinds of SIR, Security Incident Reports. We have the kinds of reports that we have to call law enforcement, and that includes things like assaults, sexual assault, suspicious activity or threats. That's how we qualify those. Then we have your more run-of-the-mill disturbances, which include drugs, drug paraphernalia, mental health issues, or homelessness, or threats. So in that bifurcation, both of those sections have increased exponentially since 2019.
So these libraries were first evaluated in, where were they, when they were first evaluated? I saw that originally in my, like, 2018 or 2019. And it says they're continually assessed. How do, so you basically take crime reports to decide which libraries are in the most need for these?
That's right. So we have security incident reports that our boots-on-the-ground team has to fill out. We tally those each month. We have annual reports, and we see a trend, unfortunately, we see a trend upwards with these threats and these disturbances. And it, I think it's also helpful to note that our staff has repeatedly asked for more assistance. When we had the social worker supervisor, we did see a material de-escalation. They taught us different ways to manage some of these incidents or disturbances, and since that service is no longer with the library, we've had repeated requests for more armed forces, armed guards from our staff, from the union as well.
I mean, certainly, we, certainly, that's the last thing we want is our library staff to feel unsafe at all. I guess I just want to make sure it's not just some of our unhoused residents that is causing this kind of fear, because again, I feel like we have so many other resources to address the homeless issue besides an armed guard. I feel like that's sort of the last thing we would advocate for when it, as it relates to the homeless. And we do know that our libraries have become, you know, ad hoc shelters for a lot of those who are unhoused. But again, I just feel like we have so many other resources, and I'm just hoping that these libraries, I know I have several in my district that were declared high-risk. I just want to make sure those, those requests from the staff are not specifically about the homeless, because again, I think we have so many other resources than having armed guards there.
Thank you for that, Supervisor, and I agree. We do have other resources, and we leverage those resources. We leverage the county resources. We leverage a program that we have internal to the library called The Source, where we bring in all of the different service providers and to try to help with folks who are unhoused or who are experiencing homelessness. I want to note that this is not strictly unhoused incidents. These are just people who are having issues and who are upset about having to come off the computer, as an example, or who can't bring their dog into the library because they don't have on, they're not service dogs and things like that. So it's a lot of different kinds of issues that we're managing on the floor, on the ground, and we're just trying to have a presence in the library. Though I do agree with you, this is not the only way that we should be supporting our team, and it's not.
And these libraries, since they've been declared high-risk, have any of them actually changed or they, I feel like these, the ones in my district have always been there, and I don't, I mean, I just don't know. I don't know how often you reassess. So these, because it's only 25 libraries get these gun-toting-
So it depends on where the-
Out of, what, we have 84 libraries?
We have 86 libraries, soon to be 87.
You know, I'm kind of drilling down a little bit about these 25.
Sure. So we do move those 25 armed guards around where necessary. So if we have an incident at one of, another library in another district, and we have several incidents, we will move them from a low, what would become a low-incident location to a higher-incident location. Frankly, we can't have them, nor should we have them at every library. That's a $65 million cost. So we are trying to leverage this contract to move them where we need them and how, wherever we need them for however long.
And that's all based on these crime stats?
These incident reports.
Or a lot of what your staff is asking for.
Well, we, we base them on the incident report. So it's really, the owners is really on the team to make sure they follow that paper trail. So there's an audit trail so that we have, we have the data to support the fact that we need these armed guards.
And again, we want to support your staff. Again, you've been a department that has really gone above and beyond of just your typical library. You offer so much, and you really stepped up during COVID to really be that, that partner with our communities. I guess I would just, in the future, be, I'd like to just make sure that you're putting armed guards where there's a real threat and not necessarily just our unhoused neighbors, because I, you know, I just, I worry about, you know, an incident. Could we get, can you share some of those reports with us? I'd like to know what you're, certainly, because we care about your staff, what they're actually requesting and what are some of the incidents that they're unfortunately having to endure? Because I think it would make us all think a little bit more about the kind of resources we could begin offering your department, maybe outside of armed guards.
Thank you, Supervisor. We certainly, we have all of that data right here in front of me. We're happy to provide it for you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Patrick, could you confirm? It's my understanding that Intercon security systems have been trained in both de-escalation and implicit bias. So could you verify if that's true or not?
That is my understanding, yes, and they work with several different library systems. So it's not just ours. It's Multnomah County as an example. There are a couple of more.
The city of Memphis.
Oh, that's right. The city of Memphis Public Library, San Antonio Public Library. So they do have a footprint in library space.
Okay. And so I just wanted to verify that they do have that kind of training, because I agree. agree, de-escalation is important. I know Supervisor Han joined me as co-author last September. As you mentioned, there was a time when you had clinicians and licensed social workers in and want to add behavioral health specialists, given, so we can really kind of try to get to the root cause of some of the challenges people in the libraries are experiencing when they come and, and have negative impact on your staff and others. And so I'm looking forward to bringing back that pilot that our motion brought forward to try to bring those additional resources into the library that will hopefully alleviate in a meaningful way, again, addressing the root cause of some of the challenges. And I think you've got to report back to that, unlike in the next 30-ish days?
On Friday.
Okay, there you go.
It's due Friday.
So I look forward to that as we really continue to look at the balance of, of how we meet everybody's needs in our public libraries. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Horbath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions. You highlight the social worker program that was in place. Social workers obviously play a different function than armed security guards. So is your preference to have the social worker program?
Thank you for the question Supervisor. Yes, it is my preference to have social workers rather than armed security guards. We, we had eight of them pre-pandemic and due to shifting resources, they had to be deployed, or I should say redeployed to other necessary entities like schools, I believe. So since then, I've been articulating the need to have social workers back at the library because we had really good, solid data for a year of these de-escalation tactics of people being able to be helped and then routed to the right, the right department outside of our department. So we feel really confident that if we can get this program up and running, we'll have a need for less armed guards and security.
And I appreciate that if, you know, our, we prefer to work with our full-time staff in, in these kinds of roles. I'm hearing you say that potentially the social workers who were deployed in that capacity need to be in other areas, given the challenges that we're facing. Did you pursue a contract with social workers instead of armed guards?
We, yes, yes, we did. So there's a couple of things. The way that it works here in the county, we had to work with the Department of Mental Health. So at the time, when we started back down this road, we could not actually contract for the department ourselves. We didn't have the staffing, the classification infrastructure, I believe, to manage the position, to manage those positions. So we have now received that from this board and from the CEO the last budget cycle. So now we have the infrastructure to be able to bring in a contract if, if finances provide, if we had the finances.
So if, if you have the staffing to manage a contract, why are we choosing an armed guard contract over a social worker contract?
So the armed guard contract was something we, we started a year ago. I mean, sometimes these contracts take a little bit of time. In addition to that, we have the report back due that, on this, this coming Friday. So we do hope to be able to right-size it and bring in more social workers and possibly de-escalate the need for armed guards. So right now, we could have armed guards at all 86 locations. We're only choosing to have armed guards at 25 locations of high incident.
I'm clear about that, but I guess these are two, in my mind, two very different functions. So if you prefer a social worker and that is the preferred contract, how are we expediting you having that contract instead of armed guards? I understand that you want a presence in the interim, but it sounds like this is a bureaucratic problem instead of a, like, a solution to what you're actually experiencing on the ground. I appreciate that Sheriff Luna needs to deploy his, his resources elsewhere. I appreciate that our department may not be able to provide you county full-time staff, but, so if you're in a position of contracting, you know, I, and what you prefer is a social worker, I want to see that happen as quickly as possible. So how do we help that happen for you?
Well, well, the report back will help with that, but it's also, it's also a financial issue. Obviously, this department historically is, is operating at a deficit. And so we have to balance the needs with, you know, with the funding that we have. So we did go down both roads. So we were going down the road of contracting. We had to deal with the fact that we needed to have the right position to be able to support the contract, which we didn't. We also didn't have that same position for security. So we got both of those approved in the same budget cycle. So that was the last budget cycle, and so now we've been moving along both paths. This one just happened to be the first board letter that was completed.
So you wouldn't want social workers only? You, even if you have social workers, you would also still want the security guards?
We would still want the security, at least for the time being, at least until we stabilize the, the mental health support, because our team, they're experiencing some pretty significant issues, threats and physical threats, and so we need to be responsive to that. And so-
As you know, I've witnessed firsthand at the San Fernando Library some very outrageous behavior, so I appreciate that we have to protect our staff. And I have also seen, in a different capacity, the liability impact we have when we have armed folks responding to a mental health crisis instead of having social workers. So if what we're trying to solve for are mental health crises, I want to make sure we have, we're deploying the right tool and the right kind of response for what you're actually experiencing. And I wasn't clear from what you said before, is the cost issue, I understand the, the funding issue historically for the department, specific to this issue, is it that the social work contract is more expensive than the armed guard contract? Or, I didn't understand the distinction there.
I, I don't actually know the answer to that question.
Based on, like, what I've seen as far as the mental health clinicians versus the armed guards, yes, it would, the mental health clinicians would be a little bit more cost-wise.
Okay. So as we get the report back, I think that's something we'll have to factor into how we deploy and make sure you have the right kind of response for the right kind of issue. You also mentioned that your cost exceedingly increased since COVID. Was that because you enhanced service or was it because the cost of having the sheriffs in that contract role increased?
I think it was both.
Okay. So you deployed more resources?
That's correct.
Okay. That, that helps me understand the issue a little bit better. I appreciate that you want to have something moved quickly, but I'm hoping that once we get this report, that we're actually going to be more targeted in the kind of response we have on site.
Thank you Supervisor.
Supervisor Han?
Yes, and thank you so much for that line of common sense questions that you, you were asking. So again, this contract is for $4 million. Is that correct? I was trying to do my math. You said sheriffs were $5 million, this was $730,000 less that you're saving, is that right?
Yes, it would be $700,000 savings. So it's five, it would be around $4 million.
Around $4 million. But is there, is there also, if you wanted to, did we, is this contract also giving you the authority for the 65?
For the, for all 86 libraries?
So 65 million?
We could, but we would never.
But we're giving you that authority today. I can kind of see where we're, we're wondering with that amount of money, is there a better, is there a better pathway to get quicker to more mental health, social workers, a different response to some of these issues? And again, we're trying to understand what the real issues are and giving you the, are you, do you want to say something?
Supervisor, I was just going to provide some context. Historically, I think that the initial cohort of social workers that were assigned to the library was funded by the Department of Mental Health under Dr. Sharon as he was trying to spin down some money that was going to revert back to the state. So Dr. Sharon and DMH funded a bunch of county programs with one-time funding. And so I think as or at the same time that that funding was winding down, COVID, we probably were in a COVID moment, and so then the library lost those resources and didn't have funding within their own budget or didn't, you know, reprioritize. Subsequent to that, the Sheriff's Department has had, you know, their deficit every year, and I believe that they are moving in two directions. One, they want to pull back their, you know, the administration of, they administer security contracts for most county departments and they have a huge, you know, contracting arm to manage that, and they're decentralizing that, sending it back to the departments. And I believe also, to the extent that they can, they want to take some of their deputies or tan shirts out of these positions to fill their own critical needs. So we have a bunch of things happening at the same time.
Yeah, Sheriff Luna has said that.
Yes.
He wants to pull them out of, particularly out of county buildings.
To Supervisor Horbath's question, which was what is, what are we trying to solve for, I think that what our librarian wants to do is have more social worker response and not necessarily prioritize the law enforcement response while simultaneously having some modicum of, you know, law enforcement presence there as needed at these high-profile facilities. I think the question is, it's either one of what is priority? You know, can you take, can you take money out of this, out of this contract and redeploy some of it to hire social workers?
Daniel?
Well, that, so we could have that discussion, because now she has the supervisory infrastructure to supervise the social workers. I think what she would request is that the CEO identify additional resources so that she could keep this level of contract and, and hire social workers.
Can you explain the difference between the 65 million that we seem to be authorizing versus this particular five-year contract is a, is $5 million?
Right, so the board motion here Supervisor says it's 65 million for five years, so it's really $11.9 million per year. And I think, I think the CEO really nailed it. I didn't want to call it out, but indeed, it's really, it's a funding issue. I think when you receive your report back on Friday, you will see that there is a solution, an immediate solution to bring back the social workers, but I didn't want to get ahead of myself because you still have the report back coming, forthcoming on Friday. So we do have a solution.
That 11 million per year is for that whole 65-
If we were to do the-
Which you're not, right now, you're not doing.
No ma'am.
I think that's what we're asking, can any of that money be used?
So annually, it's about $4 million is what we're asking, what we're anticipating now.
Of this, so I thought this was five, this is $4 million for, for these 25 libraries?
That's correct.
Yeah. The other thing, I guess I, I mean, I thank Supervisor Mitchell for, I meant to ask, have they been trained in de-escalation? And so they have had some library presence in San Antonio, where?
San Antonio, Memphis, Multnomah County, the Reagan Library.
I mean, again, I, I hope, you know, I have real concerns. I think bringing in a different company to some of, you know, my, my libraries, my communities, you know, they don't always know everybody. And I do think our sheriff's deputies have such a good, mostly idea of who people are and how, how you treat people, they probably know them by name. So I'm a little nervous that this armed security company is coming in and won't have much history with our communities.
To answer your question Supervisor, on page two of the board letter, I think the relevant language is, it's, it's a contract over five years for a potential total of 66, 65.7 million over the five years. So if this contract were fully deployed at all 86 locations, I'm not saying that it is.
Right.
If it were that, it would be 11 million a year and about 65.
I got that. I think what, what I would also ask, I think this current, the $4 million one in the 25 libraries has a option of some extensions, some, this is a five, is a five-year contract, right? Five-year with some extension possibilities?
That's, that's-
Yeah. I guess I just would hope that we could get, you know, before you, you would extend, that we, we would have another discussion here. And hopefully, we can get an ongoing discussion about how, how this company is working out.
Thank you Supervisor. And it's, I think, worth noting that we are looking to transition the current guards that we have into those positions. So it is our hope that we maintain continuity, staffing continuity. So we wouldn't be bringing on brand-new people. We'd be using the folks that we have right now through the Sheriff's Department for this contract.
Are there, are there another color shirt that does like unarmed? What color is that? You know, you've seen some security guards that are, don't necessarily carry weapons.
It's, you know, it's a great question. And we've gone back and forth with this one. And there is an option to have unarmed guard or support. If it is, if it is the desire of this board for us to have unarmed, we can certainly look at that and try to readjust and to try to adjust this contract. Historically though, we have had armed guards at all of our libraries, including the Sheriff's Department, for as long as we've had armed, as long as we've had them in libraries. That is also consistent with the city library, which is not obviously the county library, but they have an entire unit that supports their library system at about $6 or $7 million annually, who are all armed with guns, unfortunately. But if this is something that, if this is a sticking point, we can certainly revise our request.
Yeah, I don't know if it is a sticking point. I, I have real concerns about, but I don't know if that's a sticking point. So, thank you.
Supervisor Mitchell?
I would just say that again, based on the motion last fall, I look forward to the report back in seven days so we can really look at the options of, again, the motion was to give you 120 days for a portback on a pilot to bring the social workers back in, so I look forward to that. You know, it's interesting to hear the, the concern about armed guards, which I generally, you know, have a similar concern, but if the sheriffs were there, we know they're armed. And so hence, you know, my question about the kind of training they've had, and if it's de-escalation and implicit bias, that's really important to me. And when I look at the incidents reports that have come into my libraries that are slated to get it, you know, it's not all dealing with our unhoused family, friends or neighbors, or those who are exhibiting behaviors associated with mental illness. It's not. So I think it is important for everybody to review the reports that are coming in for our libraries so we have a real sense of what our library staff and fellow patrons are experiencing. So I look forward to the report back. And if you reconsider, you know, whether or not they'll all be armed or not, I think I'd like to know that and, and see how that works for the libraries in the second district. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor.
Can I just say, do we have a lag time here between when this contract has to be executed versus the report back where we can actually see if there's another, an opportunity to look at the social workers as well?
Is that part of your report on Friday?
It says in the board letter that the contract has become effective February 15th, 2025, page 1, paragraph 3.
So it's, it's now. Well, although the report back, I don't know. It'd be nice to read the report back before we-
Can they continue?
Do I, is there, do I have any appetite for continuing this until after we read the report back? Just to put it all in perspective?
I didn't hear you. I am not aware of a contractual problem except for the fact that it expires soon and that may put us back, but certainly I think that if you want to wait until the report back, it's due on Friday, and I don't know how soon the board intends to take it up, but-
So when you say, this one will take place February 15th, when does the current one expire?
So the sheriff, so we are currently under the Sheriff's Department private security, and I believe their contract is expiring sometime in May.
Oh, so we've got time. If it's continued a week?
Yeah, I, I would like to have-
Sure, if you need a week.
Making the decision with all the information in front of me.
Then we will continue this item a week? One week continuance on item number nine?
Okay.
Do I have to, do I have to vote on that?
Is one week enough if-
Well, I don't know, you said Friday.
If we get the report back Friday?
You're right. I would, like, two weeks would be better, especially if the current contract doesn't exist.
Then we will continue this item two weeks. Moved by Supervisor Han, seconded by Supervisor Mitchell. Do we need to take roll? And then we've got public comment before we do that. Public comment? Public comment?
Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers that have signed up for this item. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address item nine, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
And our first particip, and our, excuse me?
Moderator?
Our first participant is Eric Previn. Please go ahead.
Thank you Supervisors. This is a, this is a tough one because I love libraries, I know we all do. Last week, it seemed like we were celebrating the great tutoring program, nobody said anything about the violent attacks. But listen, we want everyone to be safe. I have a couple of suggestions. One is we arm librarians. Two, we take a page from Metro, get some of those ambassadors in after work because they're not armed, and they do a nice job of, you know, not allowing people to poop in the book area. And then finally, maybe we have to look at armed social workers. Now, I realize that's not what anybody's dreaming about, but we, I don't know, armed psychiatrists, is there anything we can do that's going to be sensible for the people so they can go to the library, check out a book, do a little tutoring, maybe, maybe even get a mask or some kind of testing? These libraries are doing a lot of the work for the county, and I want to thank Sky Patrick for, for copiously answering all these crazy questions. And I do think that it's a lot of money.
Thank you, your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Next, we'll go to the line of Roy Humphries. Your line is open. And Mr. Humphries, excuse me, has taken his line out of queue for a question. And we have no other speakers at this time, Madam Chair.
Very good. This item will be continued to February 4th. Moved by Supervisor Han, seconded by Supervisor Mitchell. Would you please take roll?
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, it'd be appropriate to hear from Supervisors on items not on the posted agenda to be presented or referred to staff or placed on a future agenda, and I would like to read in a motion, "The terrible loss of life that communities suggested that impacted our communities is deeply concerning. There must be a thorough examination of the lifesaving emergency notification actions that took place throughout the wildfire events earlier this month. There is a system in place that involves multiple government agencies and partners. It's important to gather all the facts so we have a complete picture of what happened and how the system was put to work to protect lives. And this work must be prioritized. Therefore, rather than wait for this assessment to be included in the general after-action report that the county typically convenes following a major disaster, I would like to immediately begin a third-party review of the emergency alert notification system." I have a read in motion that is co-authored by Supervisor Horvath. The executive office has circulated copies of this motion, and the directive reads as follows, "We therefore move that the Board of Supervisors direct County Council in consultation with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles County Fire Department, and the Chief Executive Office's Office of Emergency Management to retain a consultant with subject-matter expertise to review the evacuation policies and emergency alert notification systems utilized by the county and its partners in responding to the Palisades and Eaton fires, to review what the county, to review what the county, including Sheriff, Fire, and Office of Emergency Management did in terms of the evacuation efforts, and prepare and present a progress report back to this board in writing in 90 days and every 90 days thereafter until the consultant has completed a comprehensive review subject to the review by County Council." And that can be voted on today as an urgency motion. Oh, I, it's a report back.
My understanding is this is being put, no, no, you're directing us to retain the consultant. My understanding is this is being put on next week's agenda.
Okay, I want it to be voted on today because we found out about this after the fact, and that's why I wanted it to be voted on today.
We had, we didn't make the.
So I'm asking County Council, given the fact that we just found out about this without, I mean, after the, a board being agendized?
We didn't make the urgency findings on, on this. It was our understanding this was being put on.
All right, we'll put it on the agenda for next week, but in parallel, I want you all to gather names of consultants. All right, thank you. Now, we will move on to adjournments.
I, I have a special.
I'm sorry, you have one as well?
I do. That's all right. Thank you for including me on yours. I think swift action is necessary, that's what people are expecting, and accountability is important. Our urgency motion, which you also co-authored, Madam Chair, is a focus on emergency measures to manage debris and debris flows to protect life, property, and the natural environment. Coordinated recovery and response efforts for the 2025 fires are underway, and the county will lead inter-agency initiatives to maintain public safety, health, and chart a speedient sustainable recovery. Nine working groups of federal, state, and local partners are being convened, all led by the county, to coordinate a rapid response to the crisis. Two immediate needs necessary to protect property, public health, and the natural environment are management of debris flows and removal of hazardous materials from fire-impacted property. As we expect rain in the coming week, we must move quickly to shore up burn areas to protect against dangerous debris flows and control pollutants. The county, through its watershed protection and debris management task forces, is coordinating work with cities, our state, and federal partners to direct resources where most needed to protect those at risk. Emergency actions include implementing temporary debris, debris flow mitigation measures on streets and flood-control infrastructure, removing debris and pollution, and mitigating toxic runoff from burned areas to protect local waterways, beaches, coastal waters, and groundwater basins that serve as drinking water sources, conducting sediment removal and additional debris flow mitigation measures in cities and unincorporated county areas impacted by the fires until the threat to public health and safety has been abated. At the county's request, on January 20th, 2025, Governor Newsom issued executive order N-1325 to expedite cleanup and debris flow efforts. The executive order provides several temporary emergency powers and waives certain permitting requirements to deploy these extraordinary measures to allow L.A. County Public Works to take this action in unincorporated areas, on flood-control district infrastructure, and where necessary, on behalf of the cities of Los Angeles, Malibu, Pasadena, and Sierra Madre. Debris flow efforts will be supported by the California Department of Emergency Management and Municipal Public Works Departments. In tandem, Phase 1 of debris removal on private property is underway, being led by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. This required first step of debris removal will identify, remove, and remediate environmental hazards such as household hazardous waste from damaged private property. Details for Phase 2 debris removal is being, are being coordinated, also under the leadership of L.A. County Public Works. Expediting this work will reduce the risks these pollutants pose to human health and water quality. Based upon the foregoing and pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B2, we therefore move that the Board of Supervisors determine that, one, there is a need to take immediate action, and, two, that the need to take this action came to the attention of the board after the posting of the agenda for today's meeting. We further move that the Board of Supervisors delegate authority to the Director of Public Works to enter into memorandum of understanding with cities, districts, and other state and federal partners regarding extraordinary flood-control, debris flow, and debris removal efforts to protect life, property, and the environment from immediate hazards. And we thank Governor Newsom for his swift action in ensuring that we are able to be a coordinating agency to move efficiently and effectively and to scale our efforts for the benefit of our shared residents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Horvath. We will now vote on the need to place this urgency motion on today's agenda, for both of them actually, and then we'll vote on the motion after public comment. The urgency finding is before us, moved by Supervisor Horvath, and I will second. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor, Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public wishing to address the board on general public comment and the urgency motion by Supervisor Horvath. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 and then 0 now. Executive Officer, please read the call-in information and call the members of the public who have signed up to speak in general public comment and the urgency motion.
Members of the public, you will have one minute to address the board on these items. Please state your name for the record. You may only address the board on these items. We will now call in-person speakers, and while they are coming forward, we will take telephonic speakers.
Will the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you. Sally Flores, Daryl Terrell, Boyd Crystal. Moderator, can we have the first remote speaker, please?
Yes, and our first, our first remote speaker is Roy Humphries. Please go ahead. Your line is open.
Okay, thank you. And I didn't realize that I posed such a threat to the board there that you removed me from the queue on the library situation, but I just, you guys created this monster, and the idea that Supervisor Han has an issue with guns, they don't have to have guns, there are other armed aspects of that. So I'll just let that go. Again, you created the monster, you're spending all this money, and the idea that the participants in the library system have to be concerned that you've made the libraries habitat for the unhoused. How shameful is that? Maybe we need some men on the board. How about that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And that will be from the line of Eric Previn. Please go ahead.
Men on the board? Wow, that is a, that is a fascinating idea. I remember when it was only men, well, Gloria Molina. Anyway, I think it's, I don't think that's necessary. What we need is more supervisors. Nine would be good. No, I'm joking, of course we don't. But listen, I want to just say about this once-in-a-lifetime fiasco and catastrophe. I have four refugees and an animal in my house, and I'm not charging them anything. But this is historically bad, and what we have to do is somehow come together and provide solutions that are not about hosting mega events. Now, the Sports and Lodges in Studio City is ready for housing, Horvath. Get them in there. And Pastrella, if you could finally get the water issue out in Malibu resolved, that would really, I think that the Water Works folk want to make it work, but this has got to happen soon or it's going to become a bigger problem. And I, I just, I want to thank the Supervisors for, for being there every single day, asking the huge lot of questions at the last minute.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
You're welcome. And that is Rosalind Cassell. You may begin.
Hi, Rosalind Cassell, I'm the administrator at DOGE. I, being from DOGE, yes, of course, we are going to vote pro that this passes quickly. I also don't know how I got removed from the library queue, so I would like to reiterate what I have in public comments, which is that Tesla is offering in return for three library-funded charging stalls at the locations in question, up to 85, three Optimus humanoid robots to provide not only security, but also mental health coaching, medical training, and skills in education training, as well as socialization skills for children. We love children, puppies, and books. I am a huge advocate of the library, I spend most of my time there, Musk as well. In regards to the homeless neighbor situation, why we're getting homeless people inside of libraries, we propose that if we park two rebovens outside, that would house 22 people who could be used and to, like, trained to work as personnel within the library for mental social.
And that will be participant Erica Gibson. Your line is open. You may begin. And one moment, please, for Ms. Gibson. Ms. Gibson, if you have a comment at this time, please press 1 then 0.
Next speaker, please.
We have no other speakers in queue, Madam Chair. Please continue.
We will now go back to in-person speakers. Please begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Daryl Terrell. I'm from the city of Reno Valley in Riverside County. During these tough times, I know your residents are wondering, asking themselves, will there be brighter days ahead? And I'm reminded of a story that was written by James Madison on September 17, 1787, in the final moments of the Constitutional Convention in a time of uncertainty. As the last delegates were signing the document, Ben Franklin pointed towards a painted sun on the back of the convention president's chair. He said, "I have, I have often, in the course of this, of this session, looked at the sun behind the president's chair without being able to tell whether it was rising or setting. By now at length, I have the happiness to know it is a rising and not a setting sun. The sun will always rise on this county. Don't ever give up, and stay strong." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Board members. I'm standing in for my sister, Deandra Williams. My name is Deandra Williams. My son, Steven, was violently murdered on July 2nd, 2022. My family and I have endured countless delays within the judicial system to close to three years. Today, we are now faced with the sheriff's inability to transport inmates to their court dates. In speaking to different departments within the Superior Court Criminal Division, the resolve to this issue is unknown. Can the board members intervene to ensure that adequate transportation is available to inmates to attend court appearances? I need closure, the ability to grieve, the space to learn my new normal, uninterrupted days to earn a living without reliving my son's murder year after year in pursuit for justice. Again, I ask, can transportation be provided? Thank you, Board members.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. There are no other in-person speakers to address the board.
That concludes our time for general public comment. Item 22B, the urgency motion is before us. Moved by Supervisor Horvath, I will second to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
At this time, it'd be appropriate to hear adjournments, beginning with the 5th District, so I will begin. I move that we adjourn today. We do so in memory of Carolyn Burns, longtime resident of Altadena, who tragically died during the Eaton fire at the age of 56. Carolyn is survived by her loving family. Also, that we adjourn in memory of Edwin Cridland, longtime resident of Altadena, who tragically died during the Eaton fire at 95 years old. He died in the home where he was raised. He worked as a trucker and collected vintage cars. Edwin is survived by his loving family. Also, that we adjourn in memory of Dallas Curry, longtime resident of Altadena, who tragically died during the Eaton fire at the age of 95. Curry was born in Little Rock, Arkansas, in 1929, and had dreams of becoming a successful Hollywood actor. She moved to Los Angeles, became known for her time in old black Hollywood, and appeared in films including The Ten Commandments, Lady Sings the Blues, and The Blues Brothers. She was also a tap dancer and a singer, and was mentored by Madame Sol Tuan, the first female black actor to sign a film contract with a major studio. She later went on to work as a nurse taking care of elderly people until she retired. She is survived by her granddaughters and her loving family. Also, that we adjourn in memory of Earlene Kelly, longtime resident of Altadena, who tragically died in the Eaton fire at the age of 83 years old. Earlene Kelly and her late husband Howard bought their house at Altadena's Tonya Avenue in the late 1960s. They raised two kids there, watched their grandchildren and great-grandchildren grow, celebrated holidays, birthdays, and anniversaries. She was a retired pharmacist. She's survived by her children, Lisa and Trevor, and her grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Also, Evelyn McLendon, longtime resident of Altadena, who died at the age of 59 years old. Evelyn lived surrounded by three generations of her family in the Altadena neighborhood. Her mother lived in a separate house on the same property. Her brother, Zara Calvin, lived right next door. Evelyn held several corporate jobs before withdrawing to lead a quieter life. She was passionate and a participant on. She was passionate and a participant on, with her online church and worked as a bus driver for the Pasadena Public Schools. She's survived by her brother, mother, and grandchildren. And that we adjourn in memory of Anthony and Justin Mitchell, longtime resident of Altadena, who tragically died in the Eaton Fire at the age of sixty-eight, and Justin at the age of thirty-five. Anthony died alongside his son. They are survived by their loving family. Also, that we adjourn in memory of Rodney Nickerson, longtime resident of Altadena, who tragically died in the Eaton Fire at eighty-three years old. He graduated from L.A. High School and went to serve honorably for four years in the U.S. Navy. Rodney was a project engineer and retired from Lockheed Martin in Pasadena, where he worked for more than forty-five years. He was a grandson of Wilson, William Nickerson, a prominent black businessman who founded Golden State Mutual Life Insurance and was a founder of the namesake of Nickerson Gardens, the longest public housing development in Los Angeles. He served his community as a deacon and chairman of the Weller Street Mission, Missionary Baptist Church. Rodney's survived by his daughter, Kamiko, and grandson Chase Newton. And Victor Shaw, longtime resident of Altadena, who tragically died in the fire at sixty-six years old. He was living in his childhood home in Altadena at the time. Victor had a deep love of sports and an even deeper affection for his younger sister, who served as his caretaker for many years. He especially enjoyed football and basketball. He and his sister regularly watched games together. He's survived by his sister, Sharice Shaw, and cousin Benita Shaw Malone. Also, Kimberly Winicki, longtime resident of Altadena, who passed away in the Eaton Fire at seventy-seven years old. She was a night owl who liked to write and enjoyed listening to music. She attended Sovereign Grace Church in Pasadena. She's survived by her siblings. Xing Feng Zhao, longtime resident of Altadena, who tragically died in the Eaton Fire at the age of eighty-four years old. Zhao was born into poverty in rural China on November eighth, nineteen forty, and turned his childhood trauma into a life of resilience. He relied on financial aid and scholarships to complete his education, eventually earning a place at Peking University. After graduation, he found a job in Shanghai where he met his wife. Together, they had a son and instilled in him a love of learning and problem-solving. He's survived by his son, Shao Zhao. Those are my adjournments.
Madam Chair, can we join you on those? I mean, it's, this is the first time that so many lives have been lost in one district at one time.
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you for that. Supervisor Solis?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Dr. Keith Tarasaki. Dr. Tarasaki was a valued Board Member of the Little Tokyo Service Center, who sadly passed away on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Dr. Tarasaki's journey began at UCLA, where he earned both his undergraduate and medical degrees. Over his distinguished career, he served as Chief of the Radiology Department at Kaiser Los Angeles Medical Center for over a decade. Dr. Tarasaki's exceptional contributions to medicine were recognized early in his career with an award for the best clinician. Near the end of his medical career, he received Kaiser's Top Physician Humanitarian Award for his volunteer work on Skid Row, embodying his lifelong commitment to serving those in need. Dr. Tarasaki served on the boards of the esteemed organ, of the following esteemed organizations, including the Wesley Health Center, the Metropolitan YMCA of Los Angeles, and Los Angeles Philharmonic, and the Little Tokyo Service Center, among many others. Beyond his professional accomplishments, Dr. Tarasaki was a steadfast advocate for education, environmental sustainability, and social services. Through his family's foundation, he championed numerous causes impacting lives across Los Angeles area and beyond. Dr. Tarasaki's impact will last forever. Dr. Tarasaki is survived by his beloved wife, Cecilia Tarasaki, his son, Paul Tarasaki, and daughter, Suzie Tarasaki, his brothers, Mark Tarasaki and Tajee Tarasaki, and his sister, Amiko Tarasaki, as well as his many nieces and nephews. He's also survived by his beloved dogs, Pablo and Chewy, who brought him much joy. May he rest in peace. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Daniel Kyros. Dano was born on August eighteenth, nineteen forty-three, in Superior, Arizona, and sadly passed away on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Daniel graduated from San Gabriel High School, and after graduating, he enlisted in the United States Air Force, where he served four years. After his military service, he settled in Roland Heights and worked for more than twenty-five years as a salesman and supervisor, serving many convenience stores and military commissaries throughout Southern California. After retiring in twenty, in two thousand and one, he became an avid golfer and loved to travel, especially with his family. He was a devout member of the Saint Elizabeth Anne Senton Parish in Roland Heights and a member of the St. Vincent de Paul Organization. In twenty twenty-four, he was awarded a certificate of appreciation from his parish for his years of service working in the food pantry. David will be remembered as a devoted father and grandfather. He will also be remembered for his years of service assisting in the Saint Elizabeth Anne Senton Catholic Church Food Pantry and their annual Thanksgiving and Christmas Donation Drive events. His generosity in giving his time and money to help those less fortunate and the unhoused will always be remembered. He was a type of person who would give a stranger the shirt off his back, a jump start to their car, or stop to help change a tire. David is survived by his wife of sixty years, Linda Kyros, his daughters Christina Orr, Monica Nguyen, and his son-in-law, Andy Nguyen, and his granddaughters, Kayla and Morgan Nguyen. And lastly, and finally, I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Cecile Richards. Cecile was the former president of Planned Parenthood and a passionate and pioneering advocate for women's rights and reproductive health. Cecile was born in Waco, Texas, on July fifteenth, nineteen fifty-seven, and passed away yesterday, January twentieth, or two days ago. Cecile's parents were involved in political activism from her early years on. At the age of sixteen, she helped her mother campaign for Sarah Weddington, the attorney who won Roe versus Wade in her bid for the Texas State Legislature. After graduating college, Cecile became a labor organizer for service workers across several states, running union campaigns for garment workers, nursing, and home care workers, and janitors. When she was thirty, she moved back to Texas to help with her mother's campaign for governor. She was one of the founders of the American Votes, an organization that aims to coordinate and promote progressive issues, and she served there as president. Before that, she was Deputy Chief of Staff to Congresswoman Nancy Pelosi, and in nineteen ninety-six, she founded the Texas Freedom Network. She also served on the Board of Advisors of Let America Vote, an organization that aims to end voter suppression. Cecile served as president of Planned Parenthood from two thousand and six to two thousand and eighteen. Cecile's tireless work helped shape the landscape of women's health care and provided millions with resources and support that they needed. She also served on the Board of the Ford Foundation, a global private foundation with the mission of advancing human welfare. And in April of two thousand and nineteen, Richards co-founded a new political action group known as Supermajority to educate and train women to further women's political agenda in the two thousand and twenty elections. When I ran for Congress back in two thousand, she was a tremendous supporter of my own campaign, and I will forever be grateful for her trust and encouragement. She was one of my heroes. Cecile leaves behind an incredible legacy of courageous leadership. Her legacy will continue to serve as an inspiring role model for future generations of young women. My heart goes out to her family, Kirk, Lily, Hannah, Daniel, and all those who loved and admire her. And I know that there are several other Board Members that would like to speak on, on this adjournment as well. So Supervisor Horvath, and I believe Supervisor Mitchell, please.
I want to echo your remarks, Supervisor Solis, honoring the life of Cecile Richards. I had the privilege of meeting her during the presidential campaign of Secretary Hillary Clinton, and I came to know Ms. Richards as an incredible leader who fundamentally transformed the fight for reproductive justice and gender equality. I think she was the true embodiment of her mother's famous quote about women doing things backwards and in high heels in order to get it done. And her work ensured that countless people, particularly those who are marginalized, had access to essential reproductive health care. She was a tireless advocate who believed deeply in equity and brought people together to create meaningful, lasting change. She empowered generations of women leaders to organize, to speak out, and demand a more just and inclusive society for all of us. And her legacy does continue to inspire us all to push forward in the fight for justice and equity. May we carry with us her determination and compassion in the work ahead, and I know she will be a guardian angel for all those who continue the fight for reproductive justice and freedom. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Solis, for allowing us to, to join in. Had the privilege of, of meeting her, as well as her mother, but worked collaboratively with her as a Board Member for Sacramento Valley Planned Parenthood affiliate, as well as when I was with the National Black Women's Health Project on reproductive health issues and disparities in delivery of services. Had heard from leadership at PPLA about her diagnosis a while ago, and it made me think about the impact of stress and all that goes along with being, frankly, a woman advocate who fights every day for justice. We have no idea what that does to us and our bodies, to be perfectly honest. And so was deeply saddened to hear about her loss, particularly now, given all of the threats to all that she held dear. And so I think all of us who knew her and share her values have to make a commitment to her and many other she-rolls that we will continue the battle. So thank you for allowing us to sign on to her adjournment in memory. I appreciate you.
Members, okay. Okay, let's go on to the next. Supervisor Mitchell?
Hopefully.
Okay, so let's go on to the third Supervisor Horvath.
I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Arthur Semenow, a sixty-nine-year-old hang gliding pioneer and cherished member of the Topanga community, who tragically lost his life defending his home during the start of the Palisades Fire. Arthur was returning from a ski trip in Mammoth when he learned of the evacuation orders for his Topanga residents in the Santa Monica Mountains. He chose to return home to protect the property he had built by hand in nineteen ninety-two. A dedicated hang glider pilot for over four decades, Arthur was known for his distinctive ponytail and infectious zest for life. He was a fixture in the local community, often seen maintaining Swenson Drive and removing invasive species. Arthur is survived by his son, Andre Semenow, who described his father as unbelievably kind, magnetic, and fearless. We extend our deepest condolences to his family, friends, and all who were touched by his authenticity and courage. And I too will continue to bring forward adjournments related to the fires in the coming weeks, and welcome all my colleagues to join in these adjournments. Thank you.
Supervisor Han?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Linda Schumane, who was a head librarian at the county library in Lomita for many years. She will be dearly missed by her community, her family, her friends. Linda is survived by her cousin and my friend Suzanne Matsumiya and many lovely, loving family members. I also move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Dolores Rodriguez, who was ninety-seven when she passed away and was the fourth of twelve children. Dolores was an avid reader and an expert at word searches and loved to share stories of her life with her family. When discussing her childhood, she would often say, "We didn't have a lot, but we had enough, and we had each other." She was known for her generosity, her resilience, her independence, and her strong faith. She was involved in her church, St. Catherine Laboré in Torrance, where she served as a travel chairperson for the Will Hall seniors and later for Our Lady of Guadalupe seniors. Dolores is preceded in death by her parents, Alfonso and Beatrice, her husband of fifty-three years, Louis, and five of her sisters. She's survived by her three children, including her son, Rudy Rodriguez, who's a friend to many of us and was a longtime PAC chairman for UA two fifty, seven grandchildren, nine great-grandchildren, three sisters, two brothers, including her brother Albert, who's the grandfather of my staff member, Matt Johnson. And that's it for my adjournments.
Thank you. We will take all the motions as seconded. If there's no objection to a unanimous vote, that will be the action. That concludes today's meeting. Members of the public and colleagues, we will be showing video presentations. Supervisor Horvath has a video presentation recognizing the UCLA Research Park West and Pasadena State College as disaster recovery center sites, and a video message from Director of Public Works regarding L.A. Recovers. The next meeting of the Board will be a public hearing meeting to be held Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, at nine thirty. Thank you.
Today, we are at the UCLA Research Park West, formerly known as West Side Pavilion. It is a disaster recovery center site, and what is on-site here are services at the city, the county, the state, and federal level for everyone who has been impacted by these fires. If you lost your home, if you lost your business, if you lost your place of work, there are resources here to support you. FEMA is on-site, so if you received one of those rejection notices, when you tried to apply online, there are people here to answer your questions for you directly.
We're providing disaster recovery assistance for anyone who has been impacted by the California fires, and if you are displaced, you should consider coming down and speaking with us. There are specialists that are set up and particularly trained in disaster response and assistance.
It is critically important for people to understand, if you are applying for FEMA assistance, you must do so within sixty days of the president's signature on this declaration. That clock is ticking, so please, apply now. If you haven't already gone online, do so. If you'd like to come do so in person, you can. It is essential that any service and support you get from FEMA, you must apply in order to get that service.
At this time, we've had more than forty-nine thousand applicants apply for disaster assistance. Further, we've also had more than eleven point nine million dollars in disaster assistance funding approved. This is money that's already in the pockets of the applicants that have previously applied and are now on their way to disaster recovery.
For more information on all of the services that are being provided, you can go to recovery.lacounty.gov. There's information there, not only about all of the county services, ranging from mental health and public health to regional planning and Department of Public Works support, but there's also state and federal resources available. It's a clearinghouse for all kinds of valuable information for services you need and you deserve at this time of crisis.
So today, what we have is a local assistance center, but even more importantly, it's a disaster recovery center that FEMA has brought resources to assist victims from disasters. You can register with FEMA out in the front and follow up with the assistance that you might need, but once you come into this room, we have all the county agencies and all the state agencies that can help you access the services that you need.
My personnel here to help property owners whose property was damaged or destroyed by the fires. Under California law, if your property was damaged or destroyed, you're entitled to property tax relief.
When you come in and you talk to each of our agencies, you find out that there's the ways that we can help you. Can't make the whole picture whole, but we can at least put puzzle pieces together, and so you're on the pathway to recovery.
My family, we lost our home in the fire. It's been very devastating. Here at Pasadena City College, they have a lot of great resources, more of a one-stop shop.
But in the long term, we also want to make sure that we meet the needs of residents who are displaced or who might need a little bit more special service that the county government or the state government and the federal government can't really provide. So it becomes a more intimate relationship with the nonprofits and people who have lost as they try to get back on their feet and try to get back to a normal way of life.
One of the things I particularly want to emphasize right now is that scammers and profiteers are already at work. Do not pay for anything, for any government service.
We're sorry, your conference is ending now. Please hang up.
There's nothing that these people can do to help you with your application more than you can get directly from us.
When you're ready, we're here to provide the resources that you need to start your pathway to recovery.
Thank you, county officials, for doing this.
I'm Mark Pastrella, Director of Los Angeles County Public Works. I'm Mark Pastrilla, Director of Los Angeles County Public Works, with a message for residents affected by the devastating fires across Los Angeles County. For those of you who are still evacuated, I am so sorry for your loss and for your trouble during these times. It must be difficult to be displaced from your homes, and our hearts are with you during this challenging time. Rebuilding after a wildfire takes time, careful planning, and collaboration. My message to you from the state and local agencies involved in the recovery process is, you are not alone. I know you're eager to return to your homes and neighborhoods. We ask for your patience as affected roads and utilities are assessed and the safety of homes and other structures is determined. Once that work has been done, property owners will be allowed to return. I strongly urge you not to attempt remove hazardous fire debris yourself. Post-fire debris can contain toxic materials, including asbestos, lead, mercury, and other chemicals that are released when structures burn. These materials pose serious health risk if handled improperly or inhaled. So take extra precautions and make sure you use the proper protective equipment, including goggles, gloves, and a mask, specifically an N95 mask. The next stage is the removal of fire debris, which is a multi-step process. The first step is hazardous materials assessment. This process includes fire inspectors going property by property to provide the necessary clearances for safe removal of fire debris. It's a service provided at no cost to property owners and an essential step before actual debris removal begins. Step two is a safe debris removal. The county will launch a debris removal program to assist property owners in safely removing debris. Detailed information about this program will be available soon. After debris removal is complete, the rebuilding process can begin. L.A. County is dedicated to streamlining permitting and building processes to help you rebuild your homes and communities. I know this process can feel overwhelming, but together, we will rebuild stronger and safer communities in L.A. County. Visit recovery.lacounty.gov for ongoing updates and guidance.